That makes it easier.
Alrighty, so it looks like we have everybody here, including all of our council members. So can we start, please, with a roll call?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Royal?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Brugel?
Here.
Alrighty. Now would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Let Pam a second to get her picture up.
Hear my screen. Alrighty.
To the flag, am I making a weird noise? Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
It's America.
And to the republic. One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I heard my computer was screaming at people today, so I'll apologize in advance if that happens again. And I heard a weird noise, so. And we will move on now to the report of the closed-out session. Do we have closed session? Do we have anything? Mr. City Attorney Black?
No, Mayor, there were no reportable actions taken in closed session.
Alright. And next, we are gonna go to the mayor's announcements, and we have three proclamations. And I just realized, I believe, the first one, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. I heard that Councilmember Castellano would like to read that.
Yes, thank you. So this is the proclamation, "The City of Eureka, in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 15th through 2nd, 2020. Whereas people from all walks of life, including families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, youth and individuals are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Eureka, and no one should have to worry about whether they have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas the aim of the National Coalition for the Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for extremely low and low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and hungry. And whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week is being homeless is not a crime. And whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported to their Humboldt County Food Assessment that hunger is a daily experience for many people in Humboldt County, and food insecurity occurs in households more than 31% with adults, 37% with children, 57% of single mothers, and 17% with seniors. Whereas more than 1 in 6 Americans said there have been times over the last 12 months that they did not have enough money to buy food that their families needed. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services, such as affordable healthcare, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. And whereas National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week calls attention to the plights of homelessness and hunger and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of Eureka that November 15th through 22nd, 2020 should be designated as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week." Is someone here to receive the proclamation?
I am.
Thanks.
Good to see you, Winchell.
Hi. My name is Winchell Dillonbeck, and I am an AHA Board Member. That's the Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. AHA thanks the Eureka City Council for their recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. AHA has gratitude for the efforts of all organizations that address the needs of food insecurity, hygiene, and clothing in our community. There has never been greater health and economic challenges for housed and unhoused individuals and families in our community than during the ongoing pandemic. It is clear that Humboldt County will not have sufficient affordable housing in the near future. AHA applauds the federal court decision that ruled that people experiencing homelessness cannot be punished for sleeping outside in the absence of adequate alternatives. AHA encourages the Eureka City Council to act further on the shelter crisis proclaimed almost four years ago. It is important that the Eureka City Council encourages, supports, and moves forward with short-term solutions for the homeless crisis, especially during this pandemic, while planning and implementing long-term brick-and-mortar permanent housing. Short-term transitional housing solutions to permanent housing include safe parking places, legal camps, and tiny house villages. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Winchell. We have the Great American Smokeout. Gosh, I hope it says in here how long they've been doing this. I remember this as a kid. And I believe Councilmember Brugel would like to read this one.
Thank you. City of Eureka Proclamation, "In recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November 19th, 2020. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout in quick tobacco for at least one day, and whereas smoking remains the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. And whereas tobacco companies are attempting to block the new statewide ban on flavored tobacco that was designed to prevent kids from getting addicted. And whereas local surveys show our retail environment is filled with tobacco products, and even stores with pharmacies providing healthcare services can sell tobacco products, giving a mixed message that tobacco use is safe. And whereas the predominance of tobacco products makes it easy for youth to start smoking and harder for smokers to quit. And whereas there are many free resources to help adults and teenagers quit smoking and vaping. And whereas on Thursday, November 19th, there will be a free quit kit giveaway at Eureka Natural Foods on Broadway from noon to 3:00 PM. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of Eureka, California hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 19th, 2020, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day. Just start with day one." Thank you. And Michelle, are you here to receive this ordinance or this proclamation?
I am one of three of us that are here. Megan is going to speak first.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Megan. I'm a high school student. Michelle J. and I are part of the Tobacco Education Network. Vaping is an important issue for teenagers in our community. Many of my peers have taken it vaping because they are bored or peer pressured. Many students tend to vape at school dances. Last year, the smoke from the vaping was so thick, it was like there was fog machines everywhere. And now, Michelle.
Thanks, Megan. So we appreciate all the important work that you folks do, really do. We're just here to talk about the Tobacco Education Network meets, and we work to prevent nicotine addiction and exposure to secondhand smoke exposure in the community. And we know that education is important, but it really takes all of us to help people quit and set the stage to prevent nicotine addiction. And so, for example, more than 54 cities and counties in California have completely eliminated the sale of flavored tobacco in an effort to prevent youth from starting and getting addicted. And so I'm gonna give it to Jay McCubrey. Thank you.
Thank you, you guys. I appreciate the time. Many of you may recall, I've been with Tobacco Education Network for some time, and Megan gave her presentation about the school dance at a meeting I recently attended. And I know the statistics, but when you hear from the mouths of those most affected young people that are getting addicted to candy-flavored nicotine, it really makes you think you've gotta do something about it. And the state passed a 100%, almost 100% flavor ban. And within three days, big tobacco companies filed a referendum to overturn that law and sued the state of California. This is a current issue right now. But 54-plus communities currently have local laws to address this issue. Most recently, just this morning, Mendocino County Board of Supervisors passed a 100% flavor ban in unincorporated Mendocino County. So we can do these kinds of things at the local level, and it really makes a difference to protect the health of teens and the health of our community. Thank you so much. And to learn more, I'll just direct you to our website, tobaccofreenorthcoast.org.
Thank you, council folks.
And we have a third proclamation today. It is the National Adoption Awareness Day. And Heidi Mezner is going to read that one.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, "In recognition of National Adoption Awareness Day, November 21st, 2020. Whereas the City of Eureka recognizes the importance of giving children in foster care permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption. And whereas every child deserves the chance to grow up in a loving, stable family. And whereas children of all ages need adoptive homes, 40% are 5 years old and under. Another 40% are between 6 and 12 years old. And 20% are between 13 and 18 years old. Many of them are siblings and need to be placed together. And whereas more than 125,000 children in the US, the United States foster care system are waiting to be adopted. And whereas more than 13,000 children in California are waiting for permanent home. And whereas Humboldt County has one of the highest rates, 13.8% of children in foster care. And whereas this effort, along with similar efforts in all 50 states around the country, will offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through adoption. And whereas since 1976, when Massachusetts Governor Michael Dukakis announced the first adoption week to promote awareness of the need for adoptive families for children in foster care, then President Reagan's proclamation of the first National Adoption Week in 1984 to President Clinton's expansion to the month of November in 1995 and his expansion to allow the use of the internet to find homes for children waiting to be adopted. I believe that was in 1998. And whereas since the year 2000, over 75,000 children have been adopted on National Adoption Day alone. And whereas this year has been an especially difficult one in limiting the ability for various events, rallies, exhibits, seminars, and adoption drives to bring awareness. And whereas individuals who want to participate can get the word out with the need for families to adopt by using the hashtag #NationalAdoptionDay and by volunteering for organizations that help children get adopted. Now therefore, I, Heidi Mezner, on behalf of the mayor and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2020 as National Adoption Awareness Day." And I have, I believe Dale and Jill Maples are on the call, and they are here to accept this proclamation. Dale and Jill? Do you have anything to say?
Oh, you have to unmute your... Do you know where to unmute it? On the bottom left-hand corner?
There you go. Got it? Okay.
Sorry, we're rookies.
You're too busy raising all those kids.
That's right.
We'll be in here disrupting this meeting any minute.
Yeah, and I hope our connection will last too, because it's been on and off all day. So I just think you should say what you want to say.
Well, we're very grateful, and I have just... It's always a little bit alarming when I'm reminded of these numbers that Heidi just read in this proclamation. We're grateful for this recognition on behalf of all foster and adoptive parents, which Jill and I are both. And the need is great, and I would just say that it does sometimes seem impossible to be a foster or an adoptive parent. And when we adopted our first go-around, I think I was 51 with already having five biological children. And so that seems pretty impossible when you think in those terms. But you can do it, and the need is great. And I think most foster and adoptive parents will attest to the notion that most people that are struggling are just one significant adult away from being as successful in life. And the homes that are needed are great. And Jill, none of... We wouldn't be adoptive parents or foster parents had not Jill seen the need for it in Eureka and in our own home. She is the director of the Forgotten Initiative here in Eureka, which works to connect churches with the needs of the foster care community. So that's basically the mission of the foster care, of the Forgotten Initiative. She works and runs pretty hard to do that, and some of those things include providing journey bags and essentials that a child that's being placed into foster care would need. And we give those to the social worker to provide those during that transition. And the churches here locally help us provide all of those things. Anything else?
We try to honor the social workers as well. We have a coffee and snack station down at their offices that we fill monthly. And so those are the two big things that we do.
And it's all about trying to create a more... seeing it possible for people to be foster and adoptive parents. And you know, I think to wrap up and be so grateful for this proclamation on behalf of all of us that are those foster and adoptive parents, I think it can be... There are lots of times when it is difficult, and I won't sit here and tell you that it's all bliss. It isn't. But I think when you think about... My son's gonna walk in here in a minute, and I hear him coming up the stairs. But when you look at it for the first time, and you're new to being a foster parent or even considering being an adoptive parent, it seems unimaginable, doesn't it? And but I think as I, in about a half hour, I'll be up reading with my seven-year-old who came to us when she was a day old. And she's ours, and I have to remind myself that she's adopted. When we read to her at night, and she's learning how to read, it's unimaginable to not have adopted her. So I'll just end with that, and anybody can do it. It's not impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much, and thank you for your commitment to this community and to our children and families who work both with foster care and adoption. And remember the hashtag #NationalAdoptionDay to include that, to remind people of how important this is, particularly in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, guys, for coming and for all of the good work that you're doing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so those are our proclamations. We're gonna go for my mayor's report. I just have a couple small things. One of them is I spent last Sunday with the League of Women Voters. They write position statements on a number of issues, but apparently they also write them about the jurisdictions and their governances. And Eureka was one of the first ones that this league ever wrote, and they were rewriting it. So I got to spend some time with them talking about the city charter and how ordinances are made and the difference between... What else did we talk about? This difference between different kinds of, you know, a city council, city manager type of government versus a strong mayor government. It was really fun. It was like a civic test for those things that you don't really learn about in civics, because it's kind of too localized. And it was fun that even the people at the league felt like they learned a lot from having that discussion. So eventually, I think they're gonna come to the city council with their position that says that yes, they agree that we're doing okay. And that we don't need to change our method of government for them. So that was interesting and fun. The other thing I want to say is for a while, we were sitting very pretty in the yellow section of our COVID country. And it did jump significantly, all the way past orange and into the red as we were approaching a cold holiday season. And so I want to start by thanking so many people who I see doing all the right things. And but the idea of community... Catching it through community stuff, the words just escaped me. It's not in the future anymore, it's here now. So seriously, think about what your plans are in the future and remember that the sacrifices that you make this year will allow you to hopefully have a better year next year if we keep everybody safe. So please do that. And also, yeah, taking care of ourselves will ultimately take care of each other. So thank you all for doing that. And now I'll move on to our regular agenda. We'll start with public comment, and did we get any public comment today?
I did not have anybody request to speak in open public comment, but I don't know if there's anyone on the Zoom call who would like to.
I did not see that, okay. And then we will move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar or make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Alright. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Can we do a vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Mezner?
Aye.
Councilmember Royal?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Brugel?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And then we will move on to the ordinances and resolutions part of our day. Item C1, which is Bill 900CS. And I believe we have Senior Planner Gatz here to talk about Chapter 5 for Emergency Shelters, or Title 10, Chapter 5.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Hang on just one second, let me get my screen ready for you. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Alright, great. So before you this evening is Suggested Modifications from the Coastal Commission Regarding the Emergency Shelter Local Coastal Program Amendment. The council adopted an ordinance on May 16th, 2017 to allow emergency shelters in the coastal zone portion of the city. The coastal zone is shown here with the colored parcels. And the Coastal Commission certified the amendments on October 13th, 2020 with modifications to remove references to SB 2 from the land use designations, add an emergency shelter definition, fix referencing errors, remove the requirements for discretionary local shelter permit and unpaved open space, modify the parking standard, add a safety standard to address potential contamination, address environmental justice issues, and lastly, to add emergency shelters to the Crowley site. This modification is included in the Crowley site amendment in the next item on the agenda. The suggested modifications must be adopted by the city council. However, Eureka Municipal Code Section 10-5.2709.1 requires the Planning Commission to report on the proposed modifications prior to council action. The Planning Commission reviewed the modifications certified by the Coastal Commission at their meeting on November 9th, and by a vote of 5 to 0, adopted a resolution recommending council approve the modifications certified by the commission. Staff therefore recommends that you introduce an ordinance to adopt the modifications certified by the Coastal Commission, and a recommended motion is provided for you there on the screen.
Alright, do we have any questions for... I'm sorry, Principal Planner Gatz, not Senior Planner. And I can't see everybody here, I'm gonna go to gallery view. Anybody have any questions? I don't see any. Do we have any comments on this one? Any public comment?
No one has requested to speak on this item.
Alright, I will bring it back for comments. Councilmember Mezner?
I'm not quite sure where that went, the presentation to move, but I moved the city council wave reading, read by title only, and introduced Bill Number 990-CS and ordinance of the City of Eureka amending Title 10, Chapter 5, Article 2.5 of the Implementation Plan of the Adopted and Certified Local Coastal Program pertaining to emergency shelters.
A second.
Alright, do we have any discussion about this? Alright, and that... Oh, Councilmember Castellano?
I just want to say thank you again to Principal Planner Gatz for working so diligently on this. It's been a long time. So thank you for seeing it through. It's nice to have it moving forward.
Thank you. Alright, so we have a motion in a second, and yet a discussion. If not, we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Mezner?
Aye.
Councilmember Royal?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison? Councilmember Brugel?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Alright. And then we will continue on then with Bill Number 991CS, Amending Ordinance 984CS to amend the Implementation Plan map of the local coastal program. And we'll just continue with Senior, or with Principal Planner Gatz.
Thank you. Before you is, are the suggested modifications adopted by the Coastal Commission for the Crowley site local coastal program amendment? The City of Eureka adopted two amendments to the local coastal program pertaining to the Crowley site, which is located on Hill Ficker Lane, north of the wastewater treatment plant and south of the Humboldt Bay Fire Training Facility. And for context, here's an aerial photograph. We are located south of the Bay Shore Mall and to the east of Pearson's. There's a little closer view of it for you. The First Amendment was to change the land use designation to General Service Commercial, or GSC, and to change the zoning to Service Commercial, or CS. Staff then came back to add a Q qualified combining district to limit the types of uses that would be allowed on the site, as well as to place additional limitations on those uses. On October 13th, 2020, the Coastal Commission certified the city's LCP amendment with modifications to create a brand-new land use designation, excuse me, and to alter the limitations and uses allowed under the Q combining district. The commission created and added a mixed-use limited, or MUL, designation to the land use plan. The MUL designation allows only limited intensity, temporary residential, commercial, and public facility uses that could be developed consistent with the LCP on parcels with significant coastal resource and/or coastal hazard constraints. So on your screen, there are the uses that were originally proposed in the Q qualified zone district for the Crowley site. And I apologize, they're pretty small. The commission felt the language on the public utility use, the additional language was redundant. And they also felt that commercial vehicle storage created too much of a hazard in the event of a tsunami. So those two items were deleted. And then at the city's request, they did add emergency shelters to the listed uses allowed in the Q zone. The coastal commission also added language in two places to the Q zone. The first is to clarify the requirements to minimize flood risk in two different spots. And they also added limitations on the site to allow only one use at a time with the exception of buried public utilities. They added a requirement to prepare a soil and groundwater management plan prior to any ground disturbance for a project. And to provide a project specific buffer reduction analysis for future uses. The suggested modifications were, must be adopted by the city council. However, again, Eurica municipal code section 10-5.2709.1 requires the planning commission to report on the proposed modifications prior to council action. The planning commission reviewed the modifications certified by the coastal commission at their meeting on November 9. And by a vote of five to zero, adopted a resolution recommending council approved modifications certified by the commission. So again, staff recommends that you introduce an ordinance to adopt the modifications. And a recommended motion is provided there on the screen for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. And I, you can keep it up. I got the gallery view going without, you happened to turn it off. So do you say they have any questions? All right, oh, councilmember Arroyo?
Are there any other uses currently on the property that would keep it from being used as emergency shelter? Is is there going to be a conflict there? That I'm not aware of?
So it could be used as an emergency shelter, or it could be used as one of the other uses, and that would include the residential uses that are anticipated to be placed on the site with Betty's Community Housing.
Thank you. You're right. It's not emergency shelter. There was a time when it felt like that was the the framing of it, but thank you for reminding me of that. But it's not an issue with the fire training center being adjacent, right?
No, we've had several discussions with the Humboldt Bay Fire, and they don't see any issues with it overall.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions about this? Did we have any comments from the public?
Mayor, Betty Chin is in the Zoom call if any, she, I'm not sure if she would like to speak.
Would you like to say anything, Betty? She just turned. Looks like she turned off her audio. I mean, she turned it on. Are you talking, we lost your picture, it looks like. Well, why don't we bring it back? If she, Betty, if you come on, just sort of speak up and we'll try to stop, but right now.
Okay.
Oh, you got it?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, what do you want to ask me? I didn't hear you. I've been kept cutting off. Yeah, tell me what you want to ask, what you have for me.
We were just wondering if you had any comments about this item before we vote on it? Do you have anything that you wanted to say?
I think this is very good for our community because they on the level to go and better society had appointment of housing. Have been long waiting, and I really thank you all your guys supporting this project. And I think I do a lot of good. I'm ready.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to the meeting, councilmember. I'm, I'll bring it back. It sounds like you're the last person to speak on it. And I will invite councilmember Burghel. Do you have a comment or?
Yes, this has taken so long, and I'm just so grateful that we're finally moving forward. I agree with you, Betty. This is going to be fabulous for our community. It's just so exciting. So I'm going to make the motion and then I'm sure there's other comments. I moved the city council wave reading, reading, read by title only and introduced bill number 991-CS. An ordinance of the city of Eureka amending ordinance 984-CS. To amend the implementation plan map, zoning map of the adopted and certified local coastal program to cause parcel 019 dash 271 dash 004 to be zone service commercial CS and to add qualify, add a qualified Q combining district designation.
I'll, I'll second that and say I'm very, very excited about this, and it is about time.
It really is. Um. Do we have any discussion on this item now at councilmember Arroyo?
I'm, I'm looking forward to this moving forward, very excited. And I just wanted to thank staff for their years of diligent effort on this and Betty and Betty's board and really everyone who's worked to make this a reality. I don't think that people always realize how challenging a project like this that seems to have quite a bit of support and political will behind it can still be. So I hear a lot of, why don't they just dot, 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 whatever the dot, dot, dot is. And even with all the like willpower and you know, single minded direction we can muster, this project took a couple of years. So thank you for your hard work and it and thanks for dealing with a stubborn a stubborn council at times too. Thank you for that.
All right, do we have any other discussion on this item? I do believe. Okay, then let's have a vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Let's member Arroyo?
Heck yeah.
Councilmember Allison?
Hell yeah.
Councilmember Burghel?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Betty.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Everybody is.
You also rebellion for Eureka. Thank you.
Everybody is very, very happy to see this happening. So yay. All right, and now we will move on to P3, which is Bill 989CS city camping ordinance. And for this one, we are going to have our city attorney, Robert Black, do the presentation.
First things first, I have to get off of mute. Thank you, mayor. As the council is aware, the city has been involved in litigation stemming from the Palco Marsh abatement. And or at least arising out of that action and at that time. Litigation has kind of dragged on relatively inactive. But one step in the direction of resolving that litigation and putting it behind the city of Eureka is to revise our camping ordinance to bring it into compliance with the current state of federal law. I think all of you are aware of the Martin versus Boise case, which came out in the fall of 19, excuse me, the fall of 2018 and you know, basically said that houseless people, homeless people cannot by virtue of their status be criminalized through a total prohibition of camping in public spaces. We now have an ordinance that essentially contains such a total prohibition. This is an attempt to try to establish a set of values on the use of public property. But at the same time, permit large areas of public space within the city limits of the city of Eureka. To be available to people for whom there is no available shelter space. And that shelter space is not, not unavailable in just a broad generic sense, but unavailable to the specific individual or individuals that are in need of that shelter space. So in other words, if they have a specific set of circumstances, a specific disability, a specific relationship that would prohibit them from being admitted to a shelter, that shelter is not available to them. And therefore they are individuals who need to find a place to sleep and to camp temporarily on public property. This ordinance does prohibit camping during certain hours of the day stated to be 15 minutes after sunrise. Up to 15 minutes prior to sunset. That's in recognition of the logistics of setting up and taking down a camp, camping facility. It also prohibits camping in city parks, obviously during the dark, the dark hours. Where camping is otherwise permitted under the ordinance. It prohibits camping along the city's recreational trails at the zoo, at the golf course, and in certain neighborhoods that are largely that are specifically named and defined in parts of the Eureka municipal code. And they're pretty limited, but they consist of some of the city's prime commercial districts for the most part. The ordinance, unlike I think many ordinances that you see where there's the adoption of certain technical adjustments, for example, to allow the Betty Chin facility that in the ordinance you just adopted. You adopted some kind of technical adjustments to zoning and that sort of thing. This is an ordinance that calls for the application of judgment as to what's reasonable and what does accommodate individuals who are not totally in control of their condition as far as needing and seeking a place to sleep and lie. So in that sense, it's an ordinance in which everybody's opinion is valid. But it will be up to you, the council, to make certain determinations. Number one, do you want to have any restrictions? You could eliminate every restriction on camping on public property. And you know, that's, that's certainly a political possibility that doesn't, political possibilities aren't always politically popular. But you know, that would be the, on one end of the spectrum, you could do that. On the other end of the spectrum, I think an area where you can't go is to make the ordinance so restrictive that it is in effect another version, or in different words, a complete prohibition on camping in public spaces such as was outlawed in the Boise case. I will mention that the ordinance does something in addition to regulating camping in public spaces, and that is to regulate camping on private property as well. And that was also true of the existing ordinance. The, the constitutional rights relative to camping on private property. Unless you have permission of the owner is an entirely different ballpark and much less, I think, complicated. And so this does provide some new language for the enforcement of camping restrictions on private property. The, if you want, I could share the screen with the proposed motion, but that might make sense for later in the, later in the discussion. And I'm prepared to answer questions if you have them.
All right, do we have any questions for city attorney black? All right, oh, councilmember Allison?
Yeah, so currently there is no ordinance for camping, though there used to be one. Is that correct?
No, there's still, that ordinance still exists. It kind of comes under the heading of a blue, what they used to call blue laws. Or maybe still, we still do call them blue laws, ordinances that were adopted a long time ago that today have no force or effect because the law or history itself has moved on.
Got it.
It's there, and this would repeal that and take it off the books.
Got it. And this, this, you know, talking about like, like locations on a map, obviously it's not citywide. It's just certain parts of the city.
That is correct. Certain parts of the city where there's a blanket prohibition. And let me just say, these, the concepts that are presented here don't necessarily have the kind of legal validation that we might like if we wanted to be completely and 100% comfortable. But the concept of restricted zones comes out of the settlement between homeless advocates and the county of Orange. And I believe certain cities in the county of Orange also joined with this. And the, in that case, it was a federal lawsuit which was settled globally and the the settlement agreement includes certain restricted zones where there's no camp, no camping at any time. And to state probably one of the more obvious ones. We would, I think one of the zones that they prohibited in Orange County was the airport. Which is kind of a, I would assume a relatively non controversial restriction. And what we've tried to do here is apply that concept to certain values similar to the airport, for example, the golf course or the zoo. But also extended a bit into the protection of certain commercial zones where the operation of privately owned businesses might be impaired or inhibited by people camping on sidewalks or parklets, you know, that sort of thing in a business district.
Right. And are ordinances like these typically seen as common, whether it be statewide, nationwide, or even worldwide?
Well, I I'd like to say yes. I think that the desire to have ordinances like this is very common and extends to most cities and counties. I think cities have struggled as we struggled a bit to come up with the proper measure and application and reasonableness of regulation. That's why this, this has been quite a while in development. I mean, obviously, a lot of other things have taken place during this two-year period, but I think that that one can find different examples, and there are cities that have adopted replacement ordinances. But a lot of them are still struggling with how to do, how, how to do the job.
Will ordinances like this put houseless people in jail? Will this, you know, take people off the streets? That's a, that's a question or implied concern from people I've got.
Yes, I've heard that. And for all practical purposes, the answer is no. Is there a theoretical legal construct where this could be enforced as a misdemeanor violation of the law, which does carry a jail penalty and does carry a significant financial penalty? I think that that has never happened in practice that I know of here, and it's certainly not for multiple years now. We, you know, Sergeant We, you know, Sergeant LaFrance, who's in the field. Might be able to offer some explanation, Captain Stevens, who's, I think on this call. Might be able to speak to the department's enforcement philosophy at this point. But I think the city, for example, just to give you an example. The, I think the ordinance. Really provides a basis for conversation, human scale, human oriented conversation to occur in the field. Possibly between enforcement personnel and somebody who is camping. But to try to connect that individual, number one, with shelter. Number two, if not available, other services. Number three, potentially say a, a repeat or defiant. Violator with diversion services or other city services. I think this is, it's basically a tool for conversation. And rarely, I would say very rarely enforcement.
Thank you.
Direct enforcement.
Thank you, one last question from me, perhaps maybe Captain Stevens could maybe speak about this. Could, could you present a hypothetical situation, say someone pitched a tent in Clark Plaza at seven o'clock at night? How would EPD respond to, to something like this with the new ordinance?
That is one of the restricted areas listed in the, the ordinance, the downtown business district. Again, a lot of the enforcement we do is complaint based. We don't necessarily go out looking for violations of any ordinance in particular. And we would use the ordinance as a tool for us to actually address those issues, probably more or less based on a complaint. We would probably contact that individual, much like we do now, and as the city attorney mentioned, services is our primary goal. Is to contact people, hook them up with the appropriate services. And try to get them off the streets, that's the ultimate goal is to get people off the streets. And this would be a tool for us to actually have the authority to contact those individuals, make those connections. And then use our resources to try to get them off the street. We do run into many individuals who are just refusal of all services and don't want to accept the assistance that we try to provide, the city tries to provide. And that our other service providers provide to them. And this will give us a better enforcement tool if it comes to that, to actually try to address those issues.
Thanks a lot, Captain Stevens, that's all my questions.
All right, so Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Arroyo had questions.
Thank you, um, let's see, I have a few questions. I guess the first is just kind of regarding the, the specific situation we're in now and, and, and that we're in the midst of a pandemic. And there are concerns about. People in shelters, can, can you speak to how that? Like would, would that be considered involuntary camping if someone? Was concerned and didn't want to go to a shelter because they had concerns about health reasons for the, because of the pandemic?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's actually a good example of a conversation. An interactive process that might occur in the field because. If somebody is camping. Openly in a public area. And yet there's a shelter space available, then I think the question becomes. Is that person in the, is that person who's camping? And doesn't want to avail themselves of a shelter space because of COVID concerns? That space is not really available to them if those concerns are genuine or deeply felt. And, you know, I think that, I think that our officers in the field. I think their approach to enforcement of the ordinance is going to be one that is, and I, I think this is the directive. You know, from the management of the police department. I think their, their approach is going to be one of really dialoguing with that person, seeing if there is an available alternative. Is there a better place, a safer place to camp? If they, if they really feel they can't go into the shelter? I mean, those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of interactions that I anticipate happening out there. And not a mechanical enforcement of an ordinance that says, well. The ordinance doesn't say anything about COVID and you've got a space available, so we're going to write you up, I don't see that happening.
I, I, and so kind of a, a follow-up question, I'm just going to press this issue because I, you know, and I'll get to maybe some thoughts later, but. I guess like what if, and maybe this is a click, connect, a question for Captain Stevens. But what if, you know, someone who's camping expresses that they. Don't want to go to the shelter because they have these heartfelt, you know, or deeply felt concerns. But someone who's in an enforcement position. Sees otherwise, or, you know, or thinks that they should avail themselves of a shelter.
Captain Stevens, oh, good.
Yeah, so it's like the city attorney said, we understand those considerations, COVID has really affected our CSAT team. How we've had to operate within the homeless community and with the other resources we have. You know, we talked about the fifteen minutes prior to and the fifteen minutes after sunrise. As long as someone would, you know, be willing to adhere to those pieces of the ordinance. There are allowances that could be made, we understand that not everybody wants to be in a shelter, there are concerns for people's health. And putting people together at this time is probably not the best bet, especially as we have changed tiers now. And I know some of the resources are going to put back in more restrictive processes to take people in. And we've been considerate of that the entire time, so again, it's, it's finding that balance between the enforcement and the willingness of those we encounter on the street to. Work with us, work within the law the best they can and not create that public hazard, that public safety issue. And being willing to just get up and leave when it's time to go, and that's the, that's the short of it, we really can't have people ingraining themselves. Or embedding themselves in the camps that become nuisance for our, our community. And so if they, you know, set their tent up, they're gone when they're supposed to be gone. Then that's an accommodation that definitely would be considered by the enforcement team or by the CSAT team that's out there actually encountering the individuals.
City Manager Slattery, did you want to speak to that?
Please, I just want to add to that, you know, whether it's a, an opinion or not, in the way that the shelters are being run right now, it's, you know, going to be very clear that. You know, whether it's a rescue mission, the Bettys, or those types of things, they have strict guidelines, as we can be admitted, it's not. One flaw, so technically if that was the case, the likelihood of them having to be available to that shelter is, is not likely. And with the shelter app that we have, we plan on implementing. That space wouldn't be made available because, you know, there's strict guidelines in, in taking in participants in shelters right now, and so it's not. Something that's only on the, the community member experiencing homelessness or the opinion of EPD. I would say that those shelters have guidelines that wouldn't allow for those people to, you know, be randomly admitting during, during the time.
Thank you, and then. Maybe a somewhat related question, so if, if someone was saying, let's say camping. And they weren't in an area, they, let's say they were in, according to this ordinance, like Old Town, like at the, let's say they're at the gazebo. And someone came and said. You can't camp here, and they were like, where do I go? I mean, we're, we're not outlining that in this ordinance, so they basically just be, would they be shown a map of where they can't go? And kind of been like figured out, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand like how, how this is going to work, you know? Is that how it would work?
And, you know, I totally appreciate that you're trying to understand that, and there are, there are possibly some blanks to be filled in. But those end up getting worked out in practice in the field and. I think the, you know, certainly the current philosophy. In, at the EPD is not to err on the side of rigidity or heavy-handed enforcement. But more, as I said, to look to this interactive process and trying to. Trying to bring people to services or bring services to the people. I think. If somebody. You know, is in a, in a place that is clearly defined by the ordinance. As a restricted zone and people are prohibited from camping there. The first thing to happen is ascertain that that person knows, you know, what the law is and why they can't camp there. The second thing is. There's been a reluctance and it's one that I, I kind of agree with, but it does come up from time to time. There's been a reluctance to say. Here's where you can camp. And I think the reason for that is because it will, you know, it's going to create. A kind of a concentrated zone or a constant zone. In which camping will take place. Regularly and, and constantly. And that's, you know, that's. That's a point of discussion, but there has been a reluctance to say, oh, well, you can't camp here, but you can camp there. Effectively, we're leaving a very substantial part of the city. Available to people who want to explore where. They should go or where they can go or where they feel comfortable. So, but again, that's a point of discussion.
Thank you, and then. I guess, what, the things you said brought me to another question, and then I have another question, and I'll stop. I'm just curious, because a couple of times there's been mention of an interactive process. And I'm curious if that is inherent in the ordinance, if it. Are things, could things, something like that be written into an ordinance, is that a thing? Do people, they, they do, you know, I mean, if we're kind of saying that like part of the. The part of this implies or necessitates interaction, would that be something that? Do people, how, does that work in an ordinance, I'm just, this is just a question, I don't know.
That's a very good question, I. I think. I think it's possible, I think it would be a project unto itself, but. But I, I suspect it could be done. It's, it's not common, let's put it that way. I think the, the reason that I feel comfortable speaking publicly on the record, so to speak, about. The attitudes and approach and philosophy is because it exists. In practice in the field on a daily basis. And again, I think Sergeant LaFrance is probably the one person who's really out there. As the, you know, the head of that ongoing project in the field and. You know, I think it's, it's, it's created by a whole variety, a whole complex of policies. And when the city council votes to support. A program, you know, like a diversion program, all of those things tend to create. A kind of a quasi-legal dictate that this is how the city, this is how EPD is going to do business. And that works itself out in reality out there, I mean, that's, that is the reality, I don't see. I see the citations come through my office. And we know, for example, that there hasn't been a citation for camping. Since September or maybe prior to September 2018. But I see some citations for, you know, open containers and smoking in. Prohibited locations and those kinds of things. And there's just nothing about the EPD approach that's heavy-handed. And, yeah, I'll just leave it at that, it's, it's, it's real.
Okay, last, last question. I was just hoping, there's, I have gotten a lot of questions about criminalization. And I'm just hoping someone could speak to the diversion program or programs that exist.
I can take that one on, Bob, if that's okay with you.
Please, please.
So we had discussions with council a while back about a diversion program and, and implementing a diversion program. EPD and Uplift have been in contact with the DA on the development of that, and it's actually up and running now in a, in a pilot project. I think it's demonstrative of how this is going to be a tool and how it can be used to help provide services and contacts. Warm handoffs to programs that can help some of these community members so that they can benefit from those services. On top of that, you know, we're also still in the beginning stages of the alternative response team, which came up in discussions. Few months ago about different ways of responding to these issues. Initially was to be discussed relative to mental health issues and having. Our homeless outreach worker and a, a, a mental clinician to go out and respond to these things. This is another tool that we can use for these things when dispatch comes out and if there's a report of. Camping during certain hours or inappropriate locations, we can use that alternative response team to go out there and provide those services so that we don't have. You know, presence of an armed officer doing that, but the diversion program's up and running, we've done a pilot with an individual that. Believe was graffitiing and Sergeant LaFrance can speak to that, but it's up and running. We plan on further developing it further and, and using it as another one of the tools that we can use. And just to go back on your interactive process and those type of things, and it would be great Sergeant LaFrance if you could talk to this, but it's not just relative to camping. I think that whether it's open containers, whether it's drug use, whether it's, you know, inappropriate activities that technically are violation of our municipal code. There's an interactive process with all of those, and if there's a, an ability and a willingness to, to comply and, 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 you know. Either take services or stop doing what they're doing. I don't think the intention is in any of those cases is to, to, to give them a citation, it's trying to in compliance and trying to. Stop some of the issues that come from whether it's an open container, drug use, or, or camping. But the diversion program is definitely a perfect vehicle for some of these to avoid them getting into the system, being ticketed. Having fines, those type of things, and you know, depending on where they're at, this community member could be. Somebody who doesn't have an ID or somebody who doesn't have a social security card, and that's one of the milestones within the uplift program, they can be assigned to the uplift program. If they go and get that ID or if they go get that social security card, then whatever the violation is goes away, so. That's something that we see is helping out, we're not here to. Make this a criminal issue, we're trying to help these community members and, and get them to the programs and services that'll help them better their lives.
Sergeant LaFrance, did you want to respond to that at all as well?
Yeah, I can jump, and this is, you know, one for us, we say a one-size-fits-all approach does not work, we know that, we need every kind of approach possible on the table 360. So we, we look at accountability measures, which this ordinance would be, we also have compassion outreach measures, which we also use. So really want everything on the table and. Every single contact we have with individuals is a chance to address unwanted behavior, which is impacting the community negatively. In various ways, but it's also a chance for us to interact with folks and get them working towards long-term solutions. And addressing those underlying causes of why they're on the streets. So for us, just really one more tool in the tool belt for us, when especially the, the major. Chronic individuals that are having major problems repeatedly that are causing a significant impact throughout the city or in certain areas. It's just one more thing to, to work towards, especially when they're not accepting resources. We have, you know, definitely some individuals who are very resistant to resources. They don't want to comply with any rules at all, they make a giant mess where they go, they leave a lot of trash behind. They leave other items behind that are inaccessible to be in a public area, and so it's, it's, it's a. And so it's it's a, it's a, this is one more tool to help push that issue forward through enforcement. And we often forget that enforcement also leads towards outreach efforts as well. I can't tell you how many times we've arrested people, they've gone to jail and they've also that were either involved in heavy drug use or dealing drugs. And the fact they went to jail was a moment for them to, an aha moment to kind of open their eyes and see what's going on in their life. So enforcement does turn into outreach.
All right. So are you done, Leslie? If we could turn it over to Councilmember Arroyo.
I had some similar questions. So I think mine, my questions were around why, why not say these are the okay areas for limited nighttime only use rather than these are the not okay areas. But I think that City Attorney Black has answered that pretty well, although if there are any other thoughts that you have on, you know, why, why not do the reverse is what some community members have asked of me. So I brought that question or, you know, thought I would bring it up here. But before I lose track of it, I've been having a hard time formulating this question well. But I think I'll I'll leave it open ended and ask. So when I see problematic overnight sleeping, it's usually, when I encounter it, it's usually in the doorways of private properties where it's impeding people's access. Or, you know, immediately adjacent to a trail. And really the impact I see is like off leash dogs. And so those are the, in my like direct experience in Eureka, those are the things that I see and experience where I'm like, well, I can see why that would be problematic. But since I don't do response to complaint complaints with regard to other forms of camping. I was wondering if EPD folks could speak to a little bit more to like, why, why do you need this versus the other options that you have in your tool belt? Like, why is this ordinance needed at this time? We know why it's needed to address our our legal issue where we have an ordinance on the books that's no longer valid and we need to replace it. But could EPD speak a little bit more to why, why this tool is needed now?
So there are many individuals that are camping right now in the city that are a part of the criminal element. So we've offered them services. We made contact with them. Just today, Pop was working several Green Belt areas and around the city, ran across three felony warrant suspects. There were one for probation violation, PRCS violations and for burglary. So there is a portion of the population that is using camping as a way to avoid contact with law enforcement, to avoid being responsible and accountable for their actions and reporting like they're supposed to. But, yeah, we can make the arrest when the jail opens up and we can actually do things outside of COVID. But still, we have the issue of the camping and the impacts it's having in those Green Belt areas. So having the ability within their Martin versus Boise decision to actually address the camping with these individuals, that's going to be an important tool in many different areas of the city. In the same way, I think it is with, and I agree, the problematic areas you see sometimes are private property, which the ordinance covers and the law covers. You can't camp on somebody's private property without the appropriate permission from the owner. But there are a lot of other issues that are down there and especially in the Old Town area that creates issues for us. And having the ability to enforce when it's all other options are off the table and actually have them move their stuff and legally have that standing behind us to do it is what's going to be needed sometimes to actually make a positive impact for those business owners and for the community as a whole and open up those public spaces so that it can be used by our entire community and not just those that want to or need to camp and just don't want to abide by the law.
Thank you. And I understand that Sergeant LaFrance gave some some input on the on the trail proximity. And I was wondering if he or or you, Captain Stevens, could speak to to that, why that sort of desire for a large distance from trails?
Yeah, so a lot of that was based on we want the public to be able to use the trails. And we've had some encampments next to the trails have been pretty impactful. Garbage coming in and out of it, foot traffic nonstop. We've had some assaults. We actually had an assault just yesterday. We dealt with just south on a pound road. Yeah, just south of Pound Road. So that's primarily the reason why. But there's, there are some fish and game codes that are available also for some environmental impact. But again, we kind of want to keep that area clear for the entire public to enjoy and to appreciate and also to reduce any kind of environmental impacts.
Thank you. And City Attorney Black, did you have any other thoughts on the the framing of you shall not versus here's where you could?
I actually have a question on that too. So while you're thinking about that, I've been wondering if we do say this is where you can go, does that somehow make it, you know, city sanctioned and then like a sequoia? Like, we need to be able to say it's okay if we officially say something is sanctioned as a camp site area? I was just, yeah.
Yes, I think actually the way that, the way that you put that is illustrative of one of the problems. I think that if you, I think you might have sequoia issue. And of course, that requires a lot of city resources. It may also end up creating an obligation on the part of the city to provide facilities and services. And that, you know, if providing facilities and services such as garbage collection, you know, sanitation facilities, running water showers, you know, I don't know what the options are. Some might be saying, well, yeah, that would, sounds good. That would be a good thing. But that's a that's not really a legal question or an ordinance type question. It's much larger and kind of goes to an allocation of city resources, the development of a city program, the assignment of personnel to make those things happen. So it becomes a, it becomes a pretty large digression from the way that we've approached housing issues in the city. And would be, I think, a real shift of direction. And I know, I know that the people who were involved in the Palco Marsh cleanup are some of those who are the most resistant to naming, you know, places where it's sanctioned to camp. And by that, I'm referring to some of our law enforcement folks. Yeah, so it's, I think it's, it's a big question. It's a complex question, potentially expensive in terms of city money and city resources.
Councilmember Castellano.
Sorry, just, this is a quick follow up question. Doesn't the emergency shelter declaration give some space for the city around things like sequoia in terms of identifying a place to camp? I mean, again, not saying right or wrong, but just at this moment, I think there, I'm just wondering if there's some space around those concerns due to the emergency shelter declaration.
I think that's a good point. I think that's a good point. It might. I'm not, I'd be kind of coming off the top of my head just to opine about that, but I think that's a really, that's a good point to look into.
Councilmember Messner.
Just a follow up question on that. Emergency shelter, those are generally short term with a timeline. So I'm not, I think that might be aside from, you know, I'm wondering if that's like from this because if we're going to put something that's specific about camping, it might go maybe hand in hand, but it wouldn't be a long term, isn't the, isn't the emergency shelter ordinances when we put them in place shorter term, they're not permanent. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Bergau.
See, so I just have a couple of questions. I think we've had a lot of really good questions. And I also would say that it's really important to learn from our past and we've experienced this with Palco Marsh. I was involved in that, as was Councilmember Arroyo. And if you remember what a nightmare that was telling people where they could be and how that ended up happening, it was awful. But that's not my question. That was my my comment on that, which I shouldn't have done, but I was just curious. So part of the things that I'm reading in the emails about criminalization is that, and what I'm hearing is that people feel like that this is just another way to criminalize homelessness. And what I would like to ask, and I'm not sure, maybe maybe City Manager Slattery could answer this, or perhaps Sergeant LaFrance. What kinds of programs has the city of Eureka already come up with to support our homeless population? That 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 kind of speaks to the intention of what this ordinance may be looking at. I mean, we have Uplift Eureka, we have the diversion program. Can you talk?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's been a lot ever since the inception of CATE about five years ago. We started off with disadvantaged youth and moved on to taking care of disadvantaged community members, both adult and youth and families. And building those relationships and developing programs based off of trial and error. I would say that, you know, from that, you know, developing uplift, which is not only, it's a multifaceted program. It develops milestones where community members experiencing homelessness get get put together with a with a co pilot that, you know, takes them through whatever stages they need to go to. They, it also includes a job skills training program that takes up to 15 people out on crews to learn job skills and do work around the city, whether it's painting, little removal, some landscaping, those type of things throughout the city. And that's been going on for about two years. The program also includes milestones where they have an app that tracks what milestones they need to get to. And once they get to the certain milestones, they may be eligible for the job skills training program. Once the job skills training program, they get through that program, they become a part of our pathway to payday. Pathway to payday puts them in front of a bunch of businesses, up to 15 businesses, as well as the city of Eureka as an employer, trying to get them jobs. As a matter of fact, the last pathway to payday we did last month was 15 participants. It had to be limited because of COVID, but all 15 of those were offered jobs. All of them were community members experiencing homelessness at the time. On top of that, we've partnered with CSAT, the Community Safety Enhancement Team, that's an engagement team that's been developed by EPD. They have a whole staff that are specifically designated to address our open spaces and trails and parks, and they are dealing with these community members for the most part. And just last year, they've done well over 70 warm handoffs to services for these community members. It's been a huge change. This is not the typical municipal operation for addressing these things. It's typically done at the county level. And, you know, we've become great partners with the county and they've made us available to a lot of different resources to help support these programs. All of them are done through grant writing team that get grant funding to perform all of these programs and provide all these services. It's been extensive. And then we've moved on to housing now. We've housed over 50 people as a part of the F program over the past year and a half. And we have well over 200,000 in housing assistance funds and are continuing to house people. And we provide stipends for the job skills training program to help people out and get them used finances. We provide a rent ready program that allows them to understand, you know, how to get into a rental and live on their own. And then we also provide financial services for them. And then once we get them into housing, it's not just like we're done with them. We have a housing assistant, two housing assistant coordinators that follow up with them and follow up with the landlords and make sure that they can sustain the housing that they're in. So we've been doing, all of these programs have been in place for about a year and a half now. It's been extremely successful and the partnership with between community services and EPD. You know, I don't think there's many police agencies out there that have the personal relationship with those community members experiencing homelessness than EPD does. It's invaluable and they are partners with all the agencies and advocates for those community members. And it's, it's been outstanding. And I think that this is not in any way an intent to criminalize homeless. This is another tool to hopefully incentivize and encourage and allow for that contact and that interaction to happen so that we can further these services.
Okay. And also I noticed that, I mean, that's just a few of the things that the city's done. But they've also done partnerships with Betty Chin, trying to find different ways to support people into different ways of living, those kinds of programs. We have a lot of partnerships also. I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's really important. I think that sometimes we, well, that's not a question, so I'm going to move on. I'm sorry. An important thing. And then the last question I did want to ask was for Captain Stevens. So is there still zero enforcement at night for camping? I know that in the beginning, well, not in the beginning, but like four or five years ago, they were not enforcing during the evenings. Is that still happening?
Yes.
People sleep?
Yes, the city's, the department's stance is still, you know, between like nine o'clock at night and seven in the morning is unless it's complaint based, unless it's something that's causing a disturbance, somebody's calling us to actually say there's an issue at a camp. We have not proactively been out addressing camping issues. We do proactively address them in private property issues and situations because it does have an effect on the businesses and a lot of those open early. And there's a safety factor sometimes that is applied to the, or concerns, I guess, that are applied by the employees as they come in. So we do try to address those, but generally public camping during the nighttime hours does not get any interaction with police unless there's some type of complaint based issue that arises that we must respond to.
Thank you. Okay, was that it? All right. I don't see any other questions, so we're going to go to public comments, please.
Mayor, I do have one speaker who's on the phone waiting to call and then we'll have members that have joined our Zoom call.
Okay, thank you.
So just a moment. Go ahead, please.
First, I want to say that my sense is, having talked with some individual city council members, that is what is deep in your heart, that you would want every single person out there to have a beautiful place to stay and all the services and support they could possibly need to make their lives work for them. But at the same time, the reality is that we're not there yet. So what do we do with that? And, you know, there's no easy solution. I, what I would ask for, I guess I will state this, I should state it right up very close up time, is I happened to contact the Eureka Rescission twice to verify the information. And I believe this should be taken into account that they are not currently accepting any new nighttime residents unless they have a hospital certified proof of negative COVID test. And also, I said, well, when will the restrictions be lifted? And they said, well, they have no way of knowing, you know, it's outside of their hands. So the reason I bring that up, and then they also said that, you know, I know that it changes, so I like to honor that. But how much possessions can people bring? And they said, they can bring what can fit into two shopping, you know, the size of a Winko shopping bag and no beverages and no food and no pets. So I'm glad that they're there. I know they help people, but that is not, you know, and they told me at 7:30 they have to leave. So the reality is that it's my understanding that one of the justifications for um the the re code, the revamped code is that if there are, you know, if there's shelter available, you know, then therefore they can arrest or cite or move people along, you know. And I'm glad that you're not, you know, not citing people. But this is what I would ask, and I think it's a fair request. In the middle of COVID, this is, I see a lot of grit in in the intentions of this group, like I'm impressed and all, and heartened. But in the middle of COVID, I would ask that we pause a second and we delay bringing it up until we can work out all these different criteria that come into effect. Because I think if you read Lost Coast Outpost, basically they said, you know, it was on the Thursday, that we have to treat everybody as though they have COVID. You know, and we're up in red zone and, you know. And the thing is, I understand what your intention is, and I'm not an expert, as I've often said, so you probably recognize my voice, I've had some foot issues. So I haven't really gotten around as much as I want to. But I can tell you the impact of what these kind of regulations are on the people that they've explained to me. I've heard so many times from so many people that they went, they don't know me, I don't know why they're telling me this, that they were suicidal. I heard one man say that he he tried to kill himself twice. And he had been at some of the facilities and he no longer was allowed, you know, and I'm sure that's very complicated. But the impact on people outside to be told that they have to keep moving, and you know, that's great that they're allowed to stay until sun, sunset, sunrise. But what they're telling me is that they're forced to move along with no place to go. So I mean, I think the bottom line is, all these things that you say, Kim and everybody, they're beautiful and wonderful and heartening, but our community, and I don't, I blame all of us that we haven't figured out. And I know the rest is moving forward to create some alternative sites. The people out there are all unique individuals. They don't fit into some of the programs you have. And they have to be sort of, you know, people who are, who are ready for that. A lot of them aren't. It doesn't mean they're for me summer bed, but you know, they, they want to be safe from the, from the criminals as much as we, we do, so.
Ma'am, you're. No, I know you um you have a lot to say, and I totally understand and I appreciate it very much, but thank you so much.
All that everybody's doing, but I would say let's delay this and wait until we can incorporate everybody's point of view and make it something that works for everybody when COVID is passing through us, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Pam is amazing. She says, so terrific. I can't sing more high praise this word to help me get online. So thank you, thank you. Okay.
All right. Mayor, the rest of our speakers are on Zoom, so um if they want to raise their hands, I can call on them.
Why, oh, it looks like Rebecca Smith is at, or raised her hand.
Okay.
Okay, Rebecca.
Thank you. Um, my name is Rebecca. I work at Legal Services of Northern California. I comment tonight to urge the city council to repeal section ninety-three point O two and not replace the proposed ordinance. Uh, I want to start by mentioning the timing of this issue. We're in the midst of a serious public health crisis that has had enormous implications and exacerbated homelessness and poverty in our community and beyond. I appreciate the city's proclamation on national hunger and homelessness awareness. Part of the proclamation includes, quote, "That homelessness is not a crime" and that, quote, "No one should have to worry about whether they have food on their plate or a roof over the head, their head." I think the city has an opportunity tonight to breathe some meaning into this proclamation by not adopting the rewritten section ninety-three point O two, which in effect does criminalize homelessness and certainly does nothing to work towards the stated goal of this proclamation. I'll briefly touch on the legal issues that I see with this ordinance. But it's more thoroughly discussed in the letter that I've submitted and maybe most relevant to the city attorney. First, the proposed replacement ordinance still violates the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment by imposing criminal penalties on homeless residents of the city who have no choice but to sit, sleep, and lie on public property. The ordinance also raises due process issues. It does not provide um an ordinary person with sufficient notice of what is prohibited, when, where, and by who, and awards far too much discretion to individual police officers. The issue of criminalizing the symptoms and conditions related to homelessness is one with national implications. And other municipalities' efforts to enact similar prohibitions have been met with strong interest from advocacy groups and extensive litigation. I think this liability has been acknowledged by the city attorney and should be considered seriously. Why do this now? The issue is still being litigated. The contours of what's permissible may become more clear. I appreciate the city attorney and the sergeant's comments that this would be unlikely to result in jail time and comments related to the other tools that the police would use. But to be clear, the ordinance does allow arrest, significant fines, and jail time. Also, just to be clear, excessive fines um are part of the protection of the Eighth Amendment. And in ordinance fining individuals for um camping involuntarily does violate the Eighth Amendment. I've been unable to find any data suggesting that these ordinance improve or address homelessness. Passing this ordinance is ineffective and likely an expensive step for the city to take. The city of Eureka, as demonstrated by its proclamation and many other efforts, has a clear vision and goal to address homelessness in a moral, humane, and dignified way. Rewriting an ordinance that has been found unconstitutional due to criminalizing one's status as homeless does not bode well for or appear consistent with the the city's goals. I'll end by reading part of a recent decision. In holding that the city's anti-camping ordinance violated homeless individuals' Eighth Amendment rights, the court concludes, "There are many options available to Grants Pass to prevent the erection of encampments that cause public health and safety concerns without violating the Eighth Amendment." The court reminds governing bodies of the importance of empathy and thinking outside the box. We must try harder to protect the most vulnerable citizens. Let us not forget that homeless individuals are citizens just as much as those fortunate enough to have secure living space. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And uh, do you have a, do you have a list, Pam, that we can call the next person?
I, I do not. If they could um raise the hand, okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I would like to, for those that do not know me or recognize me, my name is Vernon Price. I am a resident of Eureka two seventeen, uh D Street, apartment three ten. I am speaking tonight as a person with lived experience of homelessness of fifteen years. I am also speaking as a regional ambassador for the Superior Region of Access California and Cal Voices. I would like to first start off by thanking every one of the council members, the city attorney, Captain Stevens, Sergeant LaFrance mainly, of really putting in a lot of hard work in trying to find something that is reasonable for all parties involved. But I would also would be remiss if I would not acknowledge what Rebecca Smith has just said. Uh, I would like to quote one thing very briefly from a federal judge. It is not camping when you are homeless. This is Michael McShane, federal district judge for the District of Oregon. And this is a quote from two thousand fifteen of University of Oregon Law School graduation. Uh, there's a lot of people that have no choice, and this isn't camping, this is survival. This is causing a lot of post-traumatic stress disorder. This causes depression and multiple class one diagnoses is through our DS MP. I think that we really need to take a step back um and do some more work on this involving those of us. I am a former um mental health uh board member here in Humboldt County. I think the consumers are are former homeless people need to get involved with some of this decision making uh for it to be productive and proactive. Thank you so much for your time, your concern, and your consideration on this. And again, thank you all for all of the hard work and the effort that you have put in to add the, bring a better quality of life uh to those underserved and less served in our community and still treating them as human beings with feelings and emotions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have another speaker?
Is there, is there a, I don't know how to raise a hand.
I was gonna ask Mariah, I saw you had a thumbs up, and I was like, is that a hand raising?
I just, I didn't even know what the thumbs up earlier, so uh, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not very prepared for this. But I would say it's pretty ironic that there was the uh adoption and foster child uh piece earlier this evening because um Harvard and the KC Foundation did a study that adults who lived in the foster system as children suffer homeless at a homelessness at a greater rate than combat veterans. And I, you know, also PTSD and um, you know, it's just uh, I don't know, I'm not very prepared for this, but you know, as far as homeless saying, you know, refusing services, I mean, I don't know, it's just. I mean, a lot of the people have suffered through so much, and being in a shelter, sleeping with a mass of other people in a room, triggers things that they might not even have words for because things that happened to them before they had words. I worked with children in the foster system. I lived in the foster system. And you don't even want to know. Let me tell you, people get so up in arms when they read an article about child abuse. But when those children grow up without, you know, the the care, and you've heard the numbers earlier tonight, they end up as adults that are, you know, have all sorts of pieces missing. And 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 they have great skills and all kinds of other things that might come from it. But um a lot of the people on the streets are suffering terribly. They're veterans of a war that hasn't been declared. There's not been uniforms or benefits or flags flying. These are people who have been veterans of the war that humanity has against itself, its own children, you know, it's vulnerable. And the, and the last thing I just want to say is that when the children see how adults are laying on the streets and suffering and not, you know, being cared for or having shelter, basic needs, they in, they inside know that if they mess up someday, they could end up that way. You know, and they they get what our values are by what they see, not by, you know, just what they're taught is, you know, ideal or whatever. So I just, I think we can do better in terms of, there needs to be more um like, you know, Vernon was saying, more with the actual homeless having a say, more autonomy in places, a twenty-four seven, um you know, place where people can have stability to camp. You know, and so this ordinance just seems like it puts way too much in the hands of police who frankly are overwhelmed, in my opinion, you know, with us sweeping all of our lack of civil responsibility and duties. You know, but there's twenty-six participants right now tonight. I'm sort of shocked. But you know, we just sweep it under the the thin blue rug, I call it, or you know, and and give it to Betty Chin. And and um, you know, so I don't, I just think it gives, it just gives too much. I like what I heard. I didn't get to hear the whole meeting. I don't have quite the technology, but I heard, you know, Leslie's questions and also um what Rebecca was saying. And then the one thing about, um, what was the other thing? About, oh, um, you know, where do they go? Where, are we telling them where they can camp, you know?
I'm afraid it's.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Everybody is so passionate. I hate cutting people off, but um I saw Nezzy Wade put up a little thumbs up, and I was wondering if that was a hand raising.
It was because I don't have, I don't have a hand raise thing.
It works.
The chat is turned off for some reason, so I can't access it. But I'd like to make a comment. I, I'm, I want to thank everyone for bringing up some wonderful questions and for the work that's been done on this. And I really want to appreciate uh law enforcement's position on wanting this to be something as a tool that would be compassionate to create conversation and all of those things. I have some real concerns about that because so much of what is being discussed here is philosophy and attitude and approach, potential dialogue, a tool. It's very ideological and lofty, and it sounds very good, whereas the law is the law. And even though it's open to interpretation, it's, it's the law, and it's mostly after the fact. So I have a lot of concerns about those kinds of things uh coming into play, particularly because I've read this stuff. And I also agree with the city attorney that while we don't have a legal validation, which is something we should be very, very concerned about, we're gonna be restricting zones, which we've done through time, place, and manner and all those things historically. But this is really extensive. And if you look at the maps and you see what's being um suggested, that's, that is pretty extensive. And you know, the the idea is to get people off the street. I have the same question. Where do they go? And you know, having a conversation that says, well, where's a better place to camp? Well, where is a better place to camp? And the answer that the city attorney gave was, well, they have the opportunity now to explore where they can go. That just sounds like pushing people around to me because they're gonna find out they can't go here and they can't go there. And it seems it would be much more proactive if we created, and because we haven't created spaces, the sense that it's going to end up in people being concentrated in certain areas, or it will take place constantly. Because we haven't been proactive in creating a variety of opportunities for people to be in various places. We don't have that to deal with at this time. So if, if not in the areas that are being available, what is available to people? And what, what can reasonably involve folks and and hear those, those voices from the homeless community? Because I think that's extremely important. There are people, I I heard the part about, you know, criminal elements and people having warrants and and, you know, people that are suspected of different things. And that some people want to avoid the police. That's absolutely true, absolutely true. But that's because that hasn't turned out to be a really good experience for them as well. So I wonder, I'm really concerned about the people that I see on the street that are are on the sidewalks, that are in business districts, that I feed often and take and and offer my, my, my care and uh resources to and help get that, help get them connected. I wonder what is that gonna be for them? And and there's been a lot of lack of talking about the specifics about, well, what happens if there isn't a place? And where do, what happens to people then? We've never gotten to the place where that's ever been said in this meeting, and I really want to know.
Thank you, thank you, Nezzy. And I saw Greg Holtz had his, had a clap sign up for a minute.
Uh, no, I was just clapping at a conference.
Um, all right, do we have anybody else who wants to speak? And if you do.
To say something.
Okay, George and then Winchell. I saw George had his hand up. Oh, we can't hear you. But we can't hear.
No.
No. Oh, now you can, maybe.
Okay. Yes, I was just made aware of this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, the other day and had concerns about it. I'm still not um completely versed on the legal ramifications of being without housing in the city of Eureka. But from what I was trying to read and from what I've been hearing on this call is that this ordinance, my concern was that it would have intent to criminalize. And what I'm hearing is the attorney saying that um it won't be um used as a hammer of enforcement. And yet, it is needed for the purpose of enforcement. And that sounds at least quite muddled and um contradictory to the spirit of compassion that um I understand the council wants to go towards and that citizens want to go towards. Um, and likewise, I am also concerned about the timing of this with COVID and the COVID economic downturn, which is causing us to look at potentially estimates uh nationwide of thirty million people becoming evicted um because of the economic um, the extreme economic downturn that we're facing. So I'm really concerned about this ordinance, and I just wanted to voice my concerns and encourage the council to reject this. And again, I appreciated what Rebecca was saying about the legal aspects. Um, I'm, I'm understanding that that's um, the legal ramifications of this are quite negative as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Winchell.
Yeah, um. I agree with what all of the advocates and and public comments are. I also to appreciate all the work that has been put in. There are a lot of good questions here. However, you can't just take away space. And and I said this at the top on the proclamation, you have to have alternatives. And what you're gonna wind up is people are gonna go to these places if you send them there. And then you said, oh, well, it's a lot to, you know, provide sanitation and, you know, showers and toilets, garbage facilities. You're gonna have that problem consistently. And what I think you need to realize, and I don't, you know. And what I think you need to realize that I don't, you know, um, I think you'll have legal issues aside from this, but, um. You know, these people need a place to go. You can't keep moving them around. You need, you know, and I've been saying this for years and, you know, now COVID is here. And I look at the, the cities and the county and advocates have been telling them what the solution has been. I've been doing this four and a half years and all I've run into is the political ill will and the lack of funding to find legal safe sanctioned camps. Um, and I agree with Desi Wade on this highfaluted, you know, philosophy. Um, you've got to understand the state of mind of people who have lived on the streets and I, I know this firsthand from my own family. Um, you know, so I, I would urge you not to move until you can find places that you can put them legally, where you can provide the necessary services. Um, you know, when I got involved in this issue, God, I, I went back to, oh, we're going to solve homelessness in two thousand and five. Well, here we are and people keep talking and everybody's putting out these programs and we still have them on the streets. And, you know, I understand it's a problem for people, you know, public lands and, and businesses. It is a problem, so you need to find the solutions that the, the advocates have been putting on your plate and move towards them. Otherwise, you're just going to continue to move this around. You're going to continue to have all these same problems. Um, and, and I also agree with the fact that um, twenty-five percent of the population is struggling, we're coming into rent evictions. Uh, we could see this really spike even more. And it's really, really tough. Um, you know, it sounds good sometimes. You know, nobody ever tells me how many people stay in their homes when you put them there. And I've heard the homeless say it's, it's great that you have case management. But it's pretty spotty and I, I've been a financial advisor for thirty-five years now. I know how hard it is to dig yourself out of a problem.
Thank you, Winchell.
You're very welcome.
Um, do we have any other speakers? I see only people on one page. There's nobody missing, I don't think. All right, so it is seven, oh wait, uh, no, it's seven fifty-five, Austin. We're going to take a break and then we'll come back for comments. Is that cool? Um, so I will see you, we'll be back at eight oh five? Or even eight, I'm good with eight, let's do eight o'clock, five minutes. So it's eight o'clock for those that can hear me. And Austin is the first on the list when we come back.
All right, you just say the word, Susan.
I will. So we're going to come back to council for comment and, um, council member Allison would like to start us off.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I want to just thank all the people who showed up tonight to give commentary. It's, it's always insightful and it's nice hearing the passion in a lot of people. And it's nice to hear other perspectives as well, um, you know, who may have differing opinions, uh, from one another, so. It's always good to hear all these things so that we can be objective in the decisions we, we make and take. And I just want to provide, um, my own sense of perspective, just sort of on humanity in the world where, you know, like the history of humanity started about six million years ago in the, in the African savanna. And through that humanity, we've learned to work together, um, to survive. And that brought us through the periods of hunter gatherer societies to agricultural societies, to the development of villages and later urban environments. And almost every society over that period of time, once we've reached these urban environments have dealt with issues of homelessness, mental health issues, things like that. It is something that every society on earth struggles with and especially here in America because of malfeasance, in my opinion, from the federal government and their unwillingness to budget to address these issues. And here in Eureka, I feel like Eureka, we're doing the best we can as a tiny little city. Um, whether it's going off for grant applications or starting nonprofits or working with nonprofit partners to really try and address some of these issues that face Humboldt County, just like the rest of the world. Um, but at the same time, we have to realize that we live in a society and each society we choose to live in has rules to those societies. And when people don't follow the rules, like, hey, I don't believe in stop signs, I'm not going to stop. Then there are problems for the other members of society who follow those rules. And so when there's issues like homelessness and houselessness or mental health issues where there's no other ways or means to, to help these individuals because there's not enough funding, there's not enough being done. Um, then, then that impacts the other people of society who are trying to follow and live within these rules and needs. And item C three to me as an ordinance seems to me more like a tool of, of escalation. A last dash approach that law enforcement can take if there's really severe issues that other members of soci, of members of society who are trying to follow the rules uh, are being impacted by. And that's not to say that, that people experiencing houselessness don't deserve their own rights and protections. They absolutely do. But we have to face reality sometimes that, that perhaps there are certain areas of the city where it isn't appropriate to always camp in because it affects other members of societies. So I can't help but think of some of my friends who I work with at the hospital as nurses who live in Old Town. And they deal with, with, uh, you know, a lot of these individuals at work in their professions and then as neighbors and you know, when, when there aren't tools to try and work with individuals who might be problematic at times. Then in a way, that's, that's very unfair to other members of society who are trying to contribute and help. And so I truly believe that EPD is, you know, their philosophy is that they cannot cite their way out of problems. That is not their first approach. Look at the way CSAT responds to incidences, just the, just the formation of that alone showcases that EPD and the city are really trying to approach these these issues of homelessness and poverty and mental health in different ways other than criminalizing people. But sometimes they need tools to be able to do their job so that there is a balance and restorative effect for every member of society. And I really think that EPD isn't going to put everyone in jail when the, if this ordinance goes live. I think it's just a tool of escalation where they can use this as a tool to perhaps strike a conversation with someone to get, to get help, to get, or to, yeah, just not be in that part of, of the city where there's issues. And yeah, it's unfortunate. I really think the city does all we can. I'd love to see what other cities can do, say like Fortuna. Um, and, you know, do what we can in the best we can with the abilities that we have, so. Needless to say, I really appreciate the public commentary and the support. But i, in a way, I am in favor of this ordinance because it is a tool. I think it would be a last ditch tool, but it's something that we should really consider.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Council member Castellano.
Um, thank you. Um, I have a few comments, um, I'll try to keep them organized. Um, first, I just want to state a couple of concerns that um, that I don't feel like we've completely addressed and that is the concerns about the pandemic and just the concerns about um, that due to a wide variety of experiences, uh, placing someone in a shelter could be placing someone in a compromised situation. Um, and I mean absolutely no disrespect to anyone who does the hard and difficult work of operating a shelter here and, and I appreciate all of your, all of your work. Um, and it, it's not about the shelter itself, it's, it's about uh, what has been spoken to in terms of like past trauma and things like that. Um. I, let's see. Um, I do think that policy should best articulate what we want to see in the world. Um, and so you know, when we, when we say, okay, well, this isn't in the policy, but it's what should happen or what we want to happen or what is happening in the community, then I wonder uh, why can't we put that into the policy? Um, and, and I think that at, you know, that's kind of our job is to put the things into our policy that we want to see in the world. Um, and so I, I do think it would be a worthwhile challenge to, you know, if, if diversion and if, um, you know, like positive interactions or, uh, you know, help, help is, is what we want to see, then I think that that should be in the policy because, and I really value, you know, like, like the work that I've seen EPD doing in terms of, you know, helping people. Um, but I also think that, um, like it, it should be policy, I, I guess it is what I'm saying. Um, you know, it, let's see. I, I also want to express though that like I've had numerous business owners come to me with like very valid concerns and frustrations about what they're experiencing trying to operate a business, you know, and, and this is not an easy time to operate a business. And, and I've actually seen the kind of lack of policy or lack of of being able to do anything, create more animosity among, between business people and people who are houseless. Um, and so that's something that I think not doing anything ha, has increased that where um, people really, business owners, you know, I, I think we need to do something to support business owners. Um. What I'm wondering is if, a, a few things, um, is if it makes sense to flesh out more involuntary camping. Um, I have some specific thoughts about the map and area. Um, and you're going to love this, um, I'm wondering about a charrette um, around this topic. Um, because I do feel like it, it's such a kind of meaty top, sorry to the vegetarians, it's such a meaty topic that I think there's, it, it deserves more than, than maybe we can accomplish in, in this one moment. Uh, but but here's what, what I think about the, the actual business districts, um, in the, in the map. Um, I would say to reduce the areas. I would say the waterfront business district, and this is where it's going to get really, like, you won't know what I'm talking about. Um, unless you're looking at a map right now, but, uh, the exclude, the excluding area should be only south of either Delmore or Vega Street and northeast of M Street. I think all parks except for Halverson Park um, should be excluded. Um, I think that Old Town and I was, I was fine with, um, Henderson Center, the area defined there. Um, I also thought, uh, Old Town and downtown except for west of Sea and north of Broadway. Um, and then, and here, this was a, a thought though, as I, as we were in this process was um, to make the, the the forbidden or excluded areas smaller and then create something that was about ten, within ten feet of business entrances during the day. Um. So, so those are kind of my thoughts, um, about this right now. Oh, and then one, sorry, one more thought, and that is, I think those, there are that area, uh, I guess that would be just. Southish of the Werfinger. Um, could be utilized in some way. Uh, for, I don't know, I, yeah, for people.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Castellano. And Councilmember Arroyo.
So I came into this topic thinking this is another one of those topics where you make absolutely no one happy. Um, there is no potential outcome here where all stakeholders will be happy with the outcome. Um, that said, we obviously have a useless ordinance on the books. Um, that is no longer relevant and so we need to. Change it and I too have heard enough from um. Folks in the community who have significant concerns and think we are not doing our job by not having some. Sideboards around the issue of public um camping. So I have, that's probably the number one thing people contact me about. Um, and I have talked to a lot of folks recently who own businesses that are struggling. Um, they're just barely getting by and keeping their doors open and they just cannot take it anymore. Um, and they are not interested in coming to a public meeting because they don't want to. Um, seem hateful or um, you know, voice the concerns um very broadly. Um, which I understand and so I think we're, we're stuck in this difficult place where. Um. You know, while, while we are. Each year supporting the. Construction or conversion of hundreds of units of housing. Um, like just in the last couple of months, we have approved or started the process moving forward for hundreds and hundreds of. Units, much to the chagrin of people who have very nimby views about it. Um, you know, so. Here we are as a really teensy city. Um, approving. Projects that will create housing, affordable housing for people who desperately need it in our community. Like, there's no question. In my mind that people desperately need housing in this community. Um, and we are here, we are here for it. Like, we are here doing it. Um, to the best of our ability, despite the fact that it really. Isn't easy for people to agree about where it should go. Um, and what is even harder to agree about is where could people camp? In our city. I have weathered the creation of. Permitted sleeping sites and that rotated and that did not work well at all and. The. Marsh situation was absolutely untenable. Um, and it was. It was a nightmare. So, um, here we are now. I think. I can, I I agree that Old Town Henderson Center, the grounds of the zoo. And the golf course are unsuitable areas for camping. Um. Whether all of these other boundaries are drawn exactly right. Um, I don't know for sure, but I know that a lot of them are wetlands. And a lot of them are really close to trails.
You just hit your mute button, Natalie.
Thank you. I got to gesturing and then I, so a lot of the the areas on the map that are. Essentially crossed out right now are really close to trails and highways and wetlands. Um, and. And that makes sense in my mind. I have gotten a lot of concerns from residents that. This will mean that folks will be pushed into neighborhoods and, um, you know, questioning whether that's our intent. Um. But I, I can't see a path forward for us to concentrate folks um. During a pandemic. Um. Any more than the existing um shelters and opportunities for people do. So if folks are gonna camp. Um. And the shelter spaces available don't work for them, then. I see logic in it being dispersed um and it being. Um, you know, something where our. Our enforcement folks are out there to. Provide education and resource connections, but not to. Um, be out there with a big hammer. Uh, now that said, the area of the ordinance that I. So I I want to go through a couple of points. One is that the unlawful camping section says. C one says it's not lawful unless we say it is. So for those of you who want us to create an option where we say it is, like, I think that leaves the window open to continue working on that. Um, which I see as a potential opportunity. Um, I know people want to see the worst in this ordinance, but there's also the aspect of, um, if it's approved by policy or by the city council, then. Then that's different. Um, then it spells out where camping is not suitable. Um, and it goes on to say that if people are engaging in obstructive conduct as defined in our code, then that's not okay. Otherwise, it says involuntary camping where people don't have another choice. Um, that works for them and that's construed pretty broadly is lawful in other areas of the city. Um, and if people say it's okay on their private property and it meets certain criteria, then it can happen there. So that leaves the option open for folks who want to purchase or use private property to allow for folks to camp there. Um, for stakeholders in the community to work with us to potentially find something that would work for C one. Where it's expressly permitted. And as just shown in this agenda, we are working to like allow for land use to be. Changed and converted to support housing. Um, and so I think that. This council has shown we're willing and interested to do that and I have no reason to believe that the incoming council will. Um, stray wildly from that path. We'll have to see. Um, but what I take a lot of issue, well, I don't want to say I take issue with. Where I think there's room for change that I'd like to address in this meeting tonight is um, section F. Where it talks about the penalties. Um, if the concern from a lot of community members, which is what I've heard loud and clear is concern around it potentially. Being um, a path towards criminalization of homelessness and that's exactly what we're trying to avoid with this ordinance. And when I look at section ten point nine nine of our municipal code, which is what's referred to in the draft ordinance. I see the general penalty section that talks about the sort of standard process for handling. Infractions and misdemeanors and then how they stack up and how they turn into more than that. Um, and that's where I think if we have a restorative justice component, I wonder if we could outline it here differently. Or if we could just limit the penalty instead of saying reference section ten point nine nine and this is all. Open to interpretation by our, our staff. Um. If we want to say that the maximum penalty is something different. Um, then I think, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney Black, I think that is within our power to do. Is is that true?
Yes, it is, and I think you could specify that a violation of this section is an infraction. As opposed to a misdemeanor.
That certainly seems appealing to me. Um, and I think we could even go so far as to say, um, a violation of this will. Be only an infraction at the lowest level or. Um, yeah, we could just stick with infraction. I mean, those do add up, but um. You know, infraction or other, um, you know. Restorative justice alternative. Um, I think that to me would take a lot of the. Um, the fear away from it being. Used differently and as a bigger hammer. So those are my comments. I don't think I have any major changes to make to the ordinance or the map. Um, that it, that it essentially creates at this time based on what I've said. Just now, but um, I would be interested in making that change to it and would be interested to hear other council members' comments.
Sorry, Councilmember Messner.
All right. Well, there is a lot here. Um, and I first of all, really appreciate everyone coming out tonight. And just expressing your thoughts and not just coming out tonight, but also. Emails that we received regarding this item. Um. I'd like to share with you a story about one of our homeless who was not capable of staying in a shelter due to trauma. And Councilmember Bergel, myself, our officers, those at the county, we all knew her by name. I would sit by her, next to her when I would find her and we'd drink coffee and chat together. Um, on just ways to um. On on what she needed and. Building trust like that with our officers and with our council members, um, because there are council members who actually spend time doing this. On a regular basis. Um, uh, and working together with with the county and and our off. All the city, the county and o- officers or um, some of our council members. Work toward finding permanent homes and she is in a permanent home now and she's doing well. Um, this is just one of many, many stories that are rarely heard. That are K, our uplift, our C set team, our pathway to pay day, our enhancement program that is being put in. Um, the way that we have changed codes to make it possible to build more housing. We've been aggressively adding more housing in our city. All of these things have been the consistent and determined effort by this council is, as well as partnerships that we've created. Um. I, I believe there was another forty beds. I'm not positive that's the exact number, but um. By the county that just opened up in Eureka, um, we are continuing to create more. And there was an app that was created to show real time spaces for shelter and beds and. Um, we have, we're still working on that, you know, would like to do more with that app. Um, so are our officers and so our um, city can work with people who are homeless. Um. This reveals the fact that we are actually in a place where we've created many, many places for people. To go and are continuing to do so to find services. The services they need, so they are not in increment weather, that they are not exposed to the elements. One of the number one ways that homeless people die is because of that exposure. And they have a very short lifespan once they're on the streets. That it is not kind to leave them on the streets. And we have, like I said, been extremely intentional about all these different ways that we have. Put all these different things that we have put into place and we have people working every day in very, very. Hard and difficult situations to bring people out of the streets and off the streets. And this is um, your tax dollars at work and um. This is um, this is just another way. We work with Aha, with um showers, mobile showers. For the homeless. Um. And there are businesses, particularly downtown, who are cleaning up human feces and needles before being able to open. They are paying employees to do that so they can actually open their businesses every single day. Um, this camping, camping ordinance creates a better option than the street. For people. It actually says, we are trying to help you. It's a way for our officers to create. Or to have more tools to help people with the options that are there. Um, to say we haven't done anything, uh, we just haven't done stuff for the houses community is to say that, you know, all the things that I just. Mentioned that we've done in the last four years since I've been on council, um, is nothing. Um, I believe we worked extremely hard to come to a place where we have so many opportunities for people. And as Councilmember Royal mentioned, the ordinance allows us to work with those who are interested. Um, uh, in providing more. And as I've looked into the history around our country. Of many of the places that have put in um camps and. Places for, to work with the homeless and places for shelter. The best place or the best success stories are not when a city does it. It's when. Community members work together to bring this about with nonprofits. So the commu- the city is working with nonprofits to put those in place. That is the most successful. Um, the most successful examples across the country. And it's not a city paying for it and trying to figure out how to make it all happen and paying people to do it. Um, and so we have left room in this ordinance to allow for working hand. Side by side and we have continued to do that. Um, I think Mariah was an earlier speaker who gave us a perfect example of why this might be something we need to put into place. Because where there are people all over our streets and businesses, creating options for them is the humane and kind thing to do and it helps our children see that. We do care for our homeless and we're not leaving them on the streets. We're helping them, trying to help them. Um, I would be interested also in seeing section F. Um. Maybe that could be an infraction as opposed to misdemeanor. I'm, and I am interested in that as well. Um, but I am definitely in a place where I feel like we, this is something that we need to do. And I'm, I am ready to, to make this move tonight.
Is that you making a motion? Okay.
I can do, I, I can do that.
You said you wanted to make the move, so it sounds.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't have the actual verbiage up. Um, I would have to pull it up. Uh, I had it in another section. Cause I was reading some stuff that.
I was just.
Um. I actually will, actually, um, I think the section F part, I'm not positive I have the exact right language for that. Um. Because we haven't kind of massaged that out and see where everyone else is at on that, but um, I will make the motion. To waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number nine eight nine. C S in ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing section ninety three oh point oh two of title. Uh, not, is that nine? No, what is that? But I don't know what that, is that one X? I don't know what that is. Chapter ninety three parks and recreation camping. What'd you say?
That's nine, that's title nine, yes.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure, um, title mine. Um, and then to. Possibly make that change, to make that change in section F, um, to make it an infraction as opposed to a misdemeanor. And maybe referencing that would, I think, be helpful in that section. So that's what I would add.
Oh, I'll second that with the friendly amendment.
Um, okay. Is that how we do that, Pam? Can you second it and then amend it there? And Kim will get to you with discussion.
I believe he seconded it with the amendment.
With the amendment. Oh, okay. I thought he was making, okay.
Well, sorry.
And now it looks like we have some discussion. Councilmember Bergel.
Thank you. I think some really good points have been made tonight. Um, thank you, everybody, for commenting and really. Being thoughtful about what you had to say. Um. The thing about, um. The thing about our job as city council members, I believe, is that we need to take into consideration the whole population. Um, and not focus on just one specific if it's going to hurt the rest of the population. And unfortunately, we've had issues in Old Town and all throughout our town for quite a long time. I too get those calls where people are just like, you know. I too get those calls where people are just like, you know, I had to clean up feces again. I had this happening. I had this happening. This guy was sleeping in my thing. There's so much trash everywhere. What am I, you know, I'm barely hanging on. And and yet this is going on and I really I believe that leaving people on the streets. I do believe, I believe that's inhumane and I think that it takes, sometimes it takes time to make those connections to support people out of that. But meeting people where they're at is critical to show folks maybe a better quality of life. You know, I don't know what's best for people, but being able to have those conversations and have them tell me what we can do to support them is a really big, a big piece of it. And that's why I support this ordinance. I support this ordinance because I think it gives some relief to our business owners. It gives a feeling of safety to our community who is walking on the trails. Whether that's, whether that's perceived fear or real, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. People are afraid to go on the trail. They're, you know, they're upset whether there's just, you know, maybe feces only one day a week, you know, and they perceive it as every day. It's part of its perception. But the reason I I support this is I think it gets it a couple of things. It gets it in, number one, it it supports our local businesses and our city as a whole. Secondly, by creating new tools for our community. You know, our houses community or for our CSET team, not only CSET though, there's a lot of people out there working with the homeless population. And I think that sometimes we forget about that, but there's a whole, whole lot of groups out there. But any way we can create a new tool to make that connection with somebody. I think, you know, then then I'm all for that. I think that we've done a really great job in and been very thoughtful in how we were going to move forward and support people the best way that we can. And I think we've done a good job, but there's always work to do. There's always work to do. And I'm grateful that I'm on a council that actually has enough compassion to continue to do that work. I really appreciate each and every one of you because we've all worked very hard on this, this issue. So the only thing on the, on the F, I like the infraction, but I really, I really like the idea of the restorative justice. I think that is a wonderful tool to support people. It's not an infraction, but gives them an opportunity to make amends, if you will, or to feel good about themselves for making a change. And so that's, those are my thoughts. You know, I think that the business community will feel a great deal of relief over this time. And I think that it's just another tool to reach out to our homeless population. It's not going to be perfect. But nothing is. We have to, we have to continue trying different things so that we can finally, you know, we're making progress. We need to continue to keep going with that. So you know, I appreciate that we've been working on housing and all the things we've been working on and I absolutely support this.
Would you like to modify your?
I'm sorry, Susan, could we add restorative justice or the diversion program or is it?
Austin, if he wanted to to do that to his motion.
I was the one who made the motion, so I think I have to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's why I raised my hand. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I would, I think that would be great to add that. That's something I know we would, we would love to see. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Castellano, you have more discussion.
Yeah, I have a quick question first for City Attorney Black. Is this the kind of thing, i- is this ordinance, are we going to have a second reading of it? Or is this, or is this? Yes.
Yes, this will be, there will be a second reading.
Okay, so I'm curious of council if you would be interested in seeing the map that I proposed at a second reading and having a choice between the two areas.
Councilmember Bergel.
I would be interested in looking at. I don't know that it would change my mind, but I certainly would be interested in in what you bring forward. I think it's important to have a thorough discussion.
And everybody else, would anybody else want to see?
I feel the same way. I don't know if it changed my mind, but I'll take a look. I like being objective.
Yeah, I'm, I feel the same. I'll definitely get it.
Sure, it's me here, but I'm curious, is that the intent of, I mean, I, I think that's kind of not like passing something with the intent to change it at the second reading is sort of not.
I was gonna ask about that.
I don't think it's unusual that when we bring a, when we bring something forward for a second reading that we don't necessarily look at different information. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to change our minds or information. But certainly looking at the minority opinion and looking at that kind of discussion, I think, you know, I don't know, there's a harm in it. Am I wrong? City Attorney Black?
No, you're not wrong. And I think the, one of the points of a second reading is to give yourself the chance for second thoughts. Whether that the adoption of a completely new map may create a situation where there needs to be a third reading, if it changes it to such an extent. I'd like to have the opportunity to to take a look at the impact or the importance of that. And possibly just circulate a memo to you about how that's going to work in the public sphere. But remember, this is kind of an important one to get right. And if Leslie has, if Councilmember Castellano has a better map, then certainly I would think you'd want to adopt the better map. So I I don't think we should worry too much about the procedural ins and outs.
So we could just move forward with the motion and vote on it without including the maps in the motion. That's just part of the discussion for next time. Is that how it works?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Messner.
Real quick, I, I know that there was someone who did send us some concerns they had about the map not matching. There were like two different maps that got put out, so it will be important that I think we are clear on what what our final map is going to look like. So I, we just want to make sure that everything that we, we finalize is consistent, I think, because there was possibly some inconsistency in some of the public information that was dispersed. So just wanting to make sure that that happens as well. Once we do adopt this completely.
Okay, so we have a motion and we, oh, Councilmember Castellano.
I, I, right now, I just want to say I feel slightly conflicted about how I will personally go forward because there's still a few areas that I feel need to be fleshed out in addition to the map. And that is how involuntary camping is stated and described. And then also mention of the, like, the, the, the idea that we want to like have some mention of a policy for like interaction or as, interaction or assessment of people as they are camping or how that, how that would go. See, seems important to me, but I'm, so, you know, like, as it is now, without those things, I'm, I would not. Though I do want some protection for businesses, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting yes on this ordinance.
Um, Councilmember Allison.
Um, I'd like to call for the votes.
Okay, I was, um, that's okay. Let's have a vote, please.
Wait, can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Is that a thing when someone calls for the vote?
I would ask, I would defer to Assistant City Manager Powell on that.
Usually when the, um, the question is called, we move forward with the vote.
Got it, okay.
You're the person who called the question could accept an amendment. Or, you know, it could ask for clarification.
I think someone has to second the call for the vote.
Pam, does somebody have to second that?
I don't have my rulebook in front of me. I'm sorry. I don't have my binder.
I have a cheat sheet for Robert's rules right here. If that's what we're following, then that has to be seconded.
We do, I actually was called the question by Melinda Chiarabellini when I was brand new and that was not a seconded motion, so I.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is.
So, um.
City has never heard of a second ever on a call for vote.
Okay, so, okay, so let's just call for the vote. And we do still have the second ordinance that we could go around and ask more questions next time. If we need something to change, even though we're voting on the ordinance as is now. But like Bob was saying, the second reading is the opportunity for us to sort of chew on this a little bit more and be more clear, clear in what we want the next time. So if there's a clarifying question, perhaps we can ask that afterwards. Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
No.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel.
Hi.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano dissenting. Motion carries.
All right.
Mayor Seaman, may I still make my brief comment?
Now you can.
Thank you. I just honestly didn't understand what Leslie was asking for in the second part about the clarification around the involuntary camping. But if that needs to be clarified in the second reading, I would be happy to see the clarifications that are needed or being asked for come back. I just think our staff will need to know that to be able to bring forward something clearer.
I saw Baba nodding his head. Um, okay, wait, I now I just have to ask a point of order thing. Before we start getting to a bunch of people asking questions about this, Assistant City Manager Powell, now that we've had the vote, are we allowed to continue to talk about it?
I would ask our city attorney that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you took action on an agendized matter. And there was a vote, an affirmative vote. But it was still agendized and I think it's, I think it's permissible for you to consider additional questions that might arise, that did arise during the meeting. So yes, I think you can, you can do that.
Thank you. All kinds of new stuff today. Councilmember Messner.
I, I was also curious about what Councilmember Arroyo was asking. I had the same question. Whether it was a friendly amendment that Councilmember Castellano was asking for or to make a secondary motion. I was a little confused on where we were going with that. So I would just, if we, when we come back, it would be great to have that ahead of time, like if there's more changes or anything like that, so that that could be presented at that time in a clear way, so we can see what that is, so we're not confused. I just don't want to be confused. And so this would be easy to have it in writing or have it clear at our second reading.
And would that, would that mean having Councilmember Castellano work with staff to maybe come up with some language that she would share at the next meeting or she'd make up her own language that she would bring to the meeting? I just want to know what that actual a- action is that we're asking for.
Yeah, make up your own language. Just, just bring that.
Well, I mean, then we discuss it then.
There were pretty clear sideboards, I think, and and from my perspective at least, what I heard was that we were talking about considering the modifications that were explained in this meeting, but that we probably didn't get to like write down to the map or to like the boundaries. And then I think there just is some question around the language for involuntary camping. That's what I heard and I'd be willing to consider both of those things because they're not like massive changes in intent, but rather like clarifying language or things like that. So how we get there doesn't matter to me.
All right. Are we all, are we all free or good to move on now?
I think City Manager Slattery has something.
Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Castellano. Mayor, uh, I think that the modification for Councilmember Castellano or requesting has been sent to staff in an email and I think that we can put that together and provide that for council. And then also I think it'd be best if Councilmember Castellano just clarified what the confusion is and then staff could come up with some more clarifying language to bring back to the council.
Okay. That sounds good. I think everybody's in agreement, so.
Awesome. I had one other quick, quick question. Does that mean, so if it's not significant, then at the next meeting, that would still be our second reading? Unless it's significant, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's the approach we're going to take.
Okay.
Yeah, and so there may be, there may be some law on this that I will research and try to clarify for everybody. But in the, in the meantime, if it's significant changes, I think we're going to treat it as a new reading and probably end up voting on it with the changes yet again, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that particularly because two of us will not be at the second reading if it goes to a third reading. So it would be important to try to keep that in the containment of not significant.
But I honestly, though, sorry, I, I mean, if it needs to get, it's better to make a better ordinance than speed it up because we have a change in council.
Yes, and there are four votes to accept it as it is. So I'm, I'm just, you know, if it's some it's not super significant changes to it, then it would make sense.
So we'll, we'll look at it next time and and Bob will explore what our options are and we will move forward to get the best possible ordinance. I think that's everybody's goal. And our next item on the agenda is city manager reports.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor.
Senator Slattery introduced.
I, I, I will have a little small snippet after this, but tonight we have Hummel Bay Fire here, who is represented by Amy Comlin, which is their community risk. Oh. Close to have a community risk reduction specialist. I apologize.
It's a long one.
Yes, and she, she is here to present on a grant that they, uh, Hummel Bay Fire received for emergency medical suits.
Hi, everyone. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. Let me know if you are able to see see this. Does everyone see this? Is that showing up on your screens?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, I'm here to talk about a grant we just received for rural EMS training. For those of you who don't know me, thank you for the introduction. My name is Amy and I, along with all of my colleagues at HBF, work on reducing risk in our community. And we just wanted to give a special shout out to Mayor Seaman, who shared this grant opportunity with us back in February. And we are so excited that we were able to put in for it and receive it. So we're happy to share now what that looks like in terms of changes for the department and how that will benefit the community. So just a brief overview of the purpose of this grant program in general, it's coming from It's coming from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And it's coming out of their recognized need for emergency services in rural areas. And the critical role that EMS personnel serve across the country. And so. Our, our jurisdiction being rural in nature, this was a direct. Reflection of, of a need in our community as well. And so it was a good fit for us. And thankfully, they thought so as well. And so I apologize for my slides here kind of. Not transferring properly from one computer to another. So I hope you'll bear with me on a couple of these slides are a little bit messed up. But just to speak quickly to the need here, so in. Humboldt Bay Fire serves Eureka and the Greater Eureka area. And in looking at some of our census data for just Eureka proper, we see a lot of disenfranchised. Community members here. So having twice the national average of people under the age of sixty five having a disability. Ten percent higher than the national average of folks in poverty. And folks without health insurance also being over five percent higher than the national average. A significant portion, almost eight percent, seven point eight percent of our population being veterans as well. And then the available care in regards to that. So. We span over fifty five miles, our jurisdiction, Humboldt Bay Fire jurisdiction. And yet that service area is only serviced by one hospital. And so you can see some of the. The numbers there as far as the beds and how many rooms are available via that hospital. And that translating to. St. Joe's only being able to provide care for less than one percent of our population at any given time. And so this really speaks to the importance of. Emergency medical services by first responders as being that first point of contact a patient receives. And potentially the only treatment they will receive in our county as so many of our medical cases may be flown out or. Or driven out of via long distance transfers and ambulances to other areas of the state for care. So the need is definitely there. I just wanted to point out some data as far as our call volume. So so far in twenty twenty, from January first until yesterday, November sixteenth. Sixty percent of our calls for service were medical in nature. And that is pretty standard for us. So we, we typically run around sixty percent. And in other areas of the country, fire, fire departments run up to eighty percent of their calls being medical in nature. So that can fluctuate pretty high. So so far this year, we have responded to three thousand four hundred and thirty EMS calls as of yesterday. And that equates to over eleven EMS specific calls per day. And that's in addition to other, other calls for service we receive as well. So I'll give you a second to digest this map here. But this is a screenshot of a mapping feature of those EMS calls so far this year. So you'll see the yellow portions there indicating medical assisting EMS crews. Motor vehicle collisions. Got a little bit of a, it's, it's pretty zoomed out. But as you can see, this helps to provide some kind of hotspot knowledge of where a majority of calls are within our jurisdiction. As I scroll down to the next slide, you'll see how dispersed they are just in the one given area. And again, those calls be reflective of several different types of medical calls. But how common, how common they are and how spread out they are in the community. So in kind of looking at where we are, what we respond to, what our community is and who belongs to it. We, we identified three goals in pursuit of this grant. So the first one was to increase our response capability and readiness for our personnel. Through advanced, reliable and frequent training. And that training is going to be provided by licensed paramedic. And certified mental and psychological first aid workers through a partnership with County DHSS. And we're going to have a specific focus as well within that on opioid overdose and treatment. The second goal was to increase advanced life support capabilities as opposed to basic life support capabilities. For our community medical emergencies with a long term goal of becoming a full time paramedic department. And our third goal was to determine the feasibility of increasing care for our community members and patients. Who are at high risk for readmission to the hospital through a community paramedicine model. And I'll talk a little, a little bit more about that in further slide, slides, but that would be a partnership between Humboldt Bay Fire. And local medical providers, community stakeholders to provide. A unique service that we haven't, we haven't provided before. Which would alleviate a draw on those local medical cares resources and alleviate the burden of our one hospital taking. A large amount of cases. So that was sort of our framework looking into this grant. And we were able to receive a whopping one hundred and nine thousand dollars from the grant. So we are ecstatic about that. That's going to be huge in meeting some of these goals that we just named. And so. Looking forward in these next couple of slides, I'm just going to show you some of what we are doing with those funds. So first is equipment. We purchased already one additional cardiac monitor that is used in advanced life support by our paramedics. So previously, we had. A need for cardiac monitors to be sort of transferred between engines depending on where a paramedic was placed. Now each engine has the ability to be equipped with a cardiac monitor so that no matter where, what engine or truck. The paramedic is on, they have that equipment available to them faster and easier. And then we also are purchasing these simulator training mannequins. These have a bunch of fancy parts that you can switch in and out so you can, so that our paramedics can. Train on real emergency medical services on these mannequins. They can actually intubate them. They can actually do crikothrombosis in their skin. And that can be removed and replaced and so that they can. They can get that real, real time training on a simulated mannequin. And have additional training to be ready out in the field. So that's some of the equipment that we are receiving. We're also increasing our training opportunities. So a portion of these funds are going to. Our monthly platoon trainings. These are led by our department paramedics and they, they touch on a broad variety of topics. Throughout the year and those go towards the continuing education credits. To go towards our annual recertifications or certifications for EMTs and paramedics alike. This funding is also going to send five EMTs through College of the Redwoods North Coast Paramedic Program. So it's going to, to take five of our EMTs, get them through the paramedic program so that there will be licensed paramedics out in our community. It's also going to fund training for ACLS and PALS, which stands for. Advanced Cardiac Life Support and Pediatric Advanced Life Support. And this is the, the, the standard of care as far as training for advanced cardiac and. Sorry. What did I say? Lost word, pediatric. We're also going to be working with DHSS to do mental and psychological first aid training. And so they've agreed to train our entire staff on that. So we're excited about that. And it's also going to fund opioid overdose and naloxone training. We have naloxone that we have provided to us through the state of California. And we're gonna have in-house training, make sure that everyone is comfortable with the use of that as well. And then one of the, the things that we're really excited about, that this grant is funding. Is a community paramedicine feasibility study and that's through Greenway Partners. We are. Just about to start our first conversation about the study tomorrow. And so this is going to look at, again, that possibility of reducing recidivism. Via ER visits and getting paramedics and possibly community partners. Out to help folks either after, after they have been seen in the hospital. Possibly prevent hospital visits by. Reaching people where they are, helping them at home with what they need so that those. Non-emergent calls to nine one one are reduced. Calls for service for non-emergency or preventable. Medical emergencies are reduced and again influx into. Facilities are reduced. And so overall, it'll be a cost savings for everyone and it'll keep our community healthier. Okay, so I, I know I went quick, but I know it's late. And so that's kind of all I have for you all. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We are really excited about this, this grant. And again, thank you so much to Mayor Seaman for passing it our way. So.
I'm so happy it was useful. Councilmember Arroyo, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I remember in the past, there were some. Limitations for Humboldt Bay Fire to provide additional medical care. Due to city ambulance having some contracts in place to, to do. Basically, the bulk of the, of the paramedic services and. I honestly don't know, I don't recall enough about it, but. Are you aware of any restrictions in that regard or any solutions that. Are sort of on the horizon?
Yeah, so there were a number of barriers up against the community paramedicine model in general. For up until very recently. This is, this current study that we're, we're entering into is actually going to be. Build, building upon an initial study with the same Greenway Partners group back in two thousand and. Three, two thousand and three. Or two thousand thirteen. And so there were laws in place preventing paramedics from, from. Operating outside of an emergency response. And I'm sure some of the other barriers that you mentioned as well. And so that's part of what this is going to kind of encapsulate is this is going to end up being. A lot of community stakeholders involved in seeing what are we able to do? What are we capable of doing? What can we build here to make this work?
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilmember Messner and then Castellano.
Thank you for sharing with us what's coming out of this. It's exciting. And I'm sure you guys are very happy to be able to implement all these, all of these things. I looked at the, when I was, when you were presenting the body, the simulation. I, I thought of that game, like I have, we have one, a human body that has like all the different parts and. Things that you can like put back together and. It's, it's, it's very. Really, it's a, it's a great way to learn. It's a great learning tool and for children, but. Then you have something like this that's specifically life size and working with, I'm assuming it's life size, is that correct? And working with adults in simulation and I, I just, I'm always amazed at how. How far we've come. I know when, when I was a child, we did, you know, that game Operation, which was quite different than. Then how far we've come with learning about our, about our bodies and medical ways to deal with medical issues. And it's exciting to see how much is out there. That can be hands on learning, which is the best way to learn. So. Thanks for just even sharing and giving us a picture of what, what we're looking at as well. So I'm excited for you guys that this is happening.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. That, as you mentioned, the hands on training is essential. And I think that's really a, a strong point of, that this grant recognized is the fact that. Folks like us in rural settings don't have the same opportunity to get to as many trainings as. Folks who might be in more populated areas or who, who readily have. Equipment available like that. So I'm having these for our paramedics to practice on and actively be able to, to, to. Practice these skills that only get harder when you're on the side of the road at night in the rain. Working on a real, a real person. And so this is going to be invaluable.
And Councilmember Castellano wants to say something before she does. Because I think at nine o'clock, we're supposed to extend the meeting? Is it at nine?
Nine thirty.
Okay, we're good. I just didn't want anybody to like complain that we didn't extend it officially. Okay.
I might talk for half an hour now, getting up.
You got twenty minutes and then we have to extend. Okay.
Um, I, I just want to say I'm really excited for this, you know, I mean, it's, it's no secret that we. Have some real limitations in, in access to healthcare here. And so just thank you for moving forward on this. And, and helping to bring, really serve the needs of our community.
Absolutely. We're excited to continue to share. The more that we, more that comes out of the study, the more changes that we're able to implement. We're excited to share that with you all as those come out as well.
Excellent. Well, this is really exciting. Thank you for coming out and staying until the wee hours of nine o'clock. And now I believe City Manager Slattery also has. Something to say or something to add to this.
I want to thank Amy and Humboldt Bay Fire for all their hard work. Great presentation. Thank you, Amy. Also wanted to give an update to council about the hatcher mediation. We had discussed that for a while and. We went through the mediation last Friday. The results of the mediation were amicable for everybody and I think that we came to a good resolution. Attending the agreement that's going to be reviewed by their board and sometime will come back to council. Just for a timing perspective, based on the, the agreement, we're gonna have to make some changes to the ordinance and that. Those changes will need to be reviewed by CEQA. So we'll, we'll do an initial study, review it from CEQA. And then bring back the secret to council and then after that, this wrap up will amend the ordinance so that we can. Implement the provision of that. So council will see something in the near future for that and we'll continue to work with. And that's all I have and I can't wait for the council reports.
Isn't it your favorite part of the meeting? There are, there's awesome stuff that comes out of the council reports. So let's get started on them and we will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Um, let's see, I've been attending meetings for broadband working group and a housing working group. Which is kind of looking at some pretty exciting ideas that I hope to share with council in the future. Yeah, and then, let's see, I did attend the. The presentation for the Arcata Fiber and Data Center project. And, and that was really interesting to learn more about what's going to be going on over there and how it. Will have, you know, beneficial economic development impact for Eureka. At the HWMA meeting, I, I do want to say I've learned so much about recycling in California over the last couple of months. Probably, gosh, ten, twelve hours of, of conversation about it. And the thing that I can say is that. There's some real challenges with. The system statewide right now and so. Right, we, though we're working on solutions, we have not found them yet. And so it's not looking like CRV buyback is coming back anytime. In the near immediate future. Unfortunately, we, you know, we do realize that, that that is frustrating for people and I just want to let people know that. I'm still working on it. We're still working on it. You know, the, the county is working on it. But it, there's, there's some big scale problems that need to be addressed. On a lighter note, I did get a, a peek at the Skywalk platform and that, I'm really excited for that project. It's just such a, it's, it's going to be a real treasure for our community to see, see the trees. In that way and, and I'm looking forward to that.
Uh, I get to pick, huh? Councilmember Messner. Uh, I get to pick, huh? Councilmember Messner.
I'm mute. Um, I, you know, I've actually been recent, I, I actually have also done the Skywalk, um, toward it. And, um, it is actually very exciting to see the progress and I cannot wait till that opens. Um, and it is coming soon. So I feel like we should put huge, like a huge across the city page or, you know, everywhere we can coming soon. Um, because it is going to be amazing. So thank you to everyone who has been working so hard on that. And I know we've been working on this for years, but it's exciting to see it coming to fruition. So I am excited about that. I also wanted to remind people, um, that the county small business, um, restart and recovery grant program for COVID. Um, those grants are, range from like five hundred to twelve, twelve thousand five hundred. Um, that that is the time for applying for those is closing soon. And I know there are so many small businesses and, um. That are, you know, especially with us moving back into an, a higher level with COVID. Can really use those. And so I, I want, just want to make sure people have that information. To go to the county website, Humboldt County website, under Rec, um, Recovery Resources for COVID. Um, those are due Friday, December fourth by five PM. So, um, I just wanted to encourage people to go in there and. Do that, um, if you need that, any kind of help that we can assist with. Um, I know that's the county, but it is something that the community has worked. On. So I just want to make sure people know that as well. And I think that's it. But for me.
And on that note, thank you so much for mentioning that county grant. And they also serve nonprofits. So if you have a nonprofit and you.
Yes.
Um, need funding, it's not exclusive to for-profit businesses. So be sure to look into that grant. Councilmember Burghel.
Thank you. Sorry, I got distracted. The rock stars from Humboldt Bay Fire are right out my window right now, working with somebody. So I was like, oh my gosh, I want to go watch them. Can they see me in the window? So I, I got a little distracted. Um, you know, I've just been doing my normal things. I'm back to work. Um, I got a lot going on right now. But will soon be over. And, um, and I've got to spend two different times at Free Meal, um, in the last. Two weeks, two and a half weeks. And I have to tell you that that is one of the biggest gifts. Um, in my life is to be able to be there with folks and connect with folks and really, um. Have those conversations that are so important. It's just such a gift. And it always really brightens my day. So. And, uh, lightens things up a lot. So that's, that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, um, just today, I was fortunate to have a wonderful conversation with our city manager and, um, the general manager of Humboldt Transit Authority to talk more about. Bus stops and, um, bus shelters in Eureka. And so there'll be more coming your way soon on that. But it was lovely to start the conversation or keep the conversation going, I should say. And. Um, I just really appreciate how pragmatic both of them are. And, um, sounds like we have some options to have some really. Beautiful, um, new bus shelters in the future. Um. This Veterans Day was kind of an unusual one. Um, normally I would be involved in some way and, um. Volunteering to support veterans or, um, honor them. But with COVID, um. I decided that the best thing I could do that week, um, to help support veterans, um. Was to do the Applied Suicide Intervention, uh, Skills Training that. That is offered to, well, it's, um. It's offered to many people within the federal government, but other government entities too. Um, couple days worth of. Um, training around suicide intervention. And so that was really meaningful. And, um, I was able to do that last week. And then, in just the last couple of days, the, um, I don't know if folks have been following the progress on. The Klamath Dam removal, but essentially it hit a big, big, big bureaucratic hurdle. Couple months ago. And, um. Just today, the big public announcement was made that the states of California and Oregon are going to become co-licenses with the Klamath River Renewal Corporation. Which I serve on the board of, um, to move forward with, um, the opportunity to remove the dams that are slated for removal. So. Pretty historic, um, thing that happened and took a lot of, um. Behind the scenes negotiation and hard work and advocacy and tribal members going to protest at Berkshire Hathaway and, and a lot of, um. A lot of people doing a lot of amazing things. Um. So I am proud to be a small part of it, um, but also just really excited for what that will mean for. Future health of, um, our fisheries and watersheds here. Um. And, you know, as it, as goes the Klamath, so goes the whole North Coast, it, it seems in, in many environmental ways. So, um. It's pretty, pretty big news. Um, some other big news that's not purely within the city of Eureka, but is, um, regionally important, um, or nearby. Communities, um, you know, are immediately affected. Um, was that the, I don't know if folks knew this, but Friends of the Dunes was able to buy, um. A former arclay-owned property, um, known as the Dog Ranch on the Samoa Peninsula. Um, and I was able to tour it the other day. Um, and just such an incredible property. It's the property that the Connecticut Grand Championship goes through for, um, the big sand drop. Um, so if you've been out to what they call Dead Man's Drop, um. That is the place we're talking about. So it's beautiful dune forest, um, rare and special and. Um, and it will be preserved as public land now because they were able to buy it. So, um. More to come on that, but, um, just like such a treasure that we have basically in our backyard. So, um, those are some things that I did. And, you know, a lot of them didn't even happen in Eureka. But, um, our community is more than just the limits of our city. So.
Exactly. As Humboldt County goes, so goes Eureka. Uh, or Councilmember Allison.
Hey there. Um, yeah, gosh, this year's just been crazy, hasn't it? Um, I'd just like to remind people that if you go on the Humboldt County, uh, website, there's places to sign up for COVID testing for free. And to get tested often, because even if you know you're negative. These negative scores definitely impact our tier list for opens and closures in this county. So. If you want to help be a part of the change, then keep socially distancing yourself, keep getting tested, keep wearing masks because it's so important. Our hospitals really couldn't, uh, take a huge surge of really sick people. Um, we just don't have the services and it's all going to be pretty. So please just take care of yourselves. And the quicker we follow the rules, hopefully the quicker this can be over with.
And that is a good thing to leave thinking about is that we want to keep everybody safe from COVID. And my parting words, I suppose, will be that I just did an anti-bullying video. It's Anti-Bully Week. And. And as terrible as bullying is, it makes me think about how happy I am when people are respectful. And kind to each other. And especially when we're disagreeing. And we can maintain that. And so I really treasure that that happens here. Um, with the people who come in and share their opinions and with each other. So thank you all. And we will see you soon. Bye.